And personally, thank you. Amanda Bond?
Here.
Marianne? Here. Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Cruz?
Good.
Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, that's right.
Ms. Dorn? We have five members of the council. Nice meeting after the first item on our agenda. We'll continue with the agenda. And so the first item, Ms. Dorn, you'll start that one.
Yeah, if I may, Madam President, I'd like to just prior to the tour beginning, have our city engineer just do a brief PowerPoint. That'll allow traffic on campus to prepare a little bit as well. Give us time to get on the bus. And then we first drive out to the eight by eleven Green Island location, take a look at what's happening there with the design. And then the second part of the discussion leads to Evergreen ten to eleven mile. You?
Good early evening, everybody. So the Landscape Island at Evergreen and the eight miles, the PowerPoint presentation is just to go over some of the background information and then where we are today with that project. So this is how it looks. This was back in June when we started getting some grass growing in there. Someone had gone out and taken a picture. So you can see that Marathon Gas Station is in the foreground here with the Harp and Auto Parts behind the thing. So the timeline, just to go over how the Landscape Island came about, approximately April of 2013, the Landscape Island concept was added to the project as a way to beautify this main gateway entrance into the City of Southfield to landscape for now and in the future, once funding identified for a City of Southfield welcome sign. In June of that same year, 2013, a notice was mailed to all the property owners regarding a public open house meeting. That meeting being held on July tenth, 2013. Then in August, 2013, plans were submitted to MDOT that included the island. The gas station owner did not attend that open house meeting, so he was not aware that this project was including that meeting and island until after construction started in 2014. It wasn't really until fall of 2014 that that island was going in. And then the gas station owner saw it and called to inquire what was going on. And we told him about the island. He started expressing concerns about some of the limiting of the left turn movement if that island would cause his Evergreen drive approach. So besides beautifying for this gateway entrance, one of, well, with the beautification and the landscaping, the landscaping does act as a traffic calming. So coming into any corridor, it's nice to have the landscaping up close. We were reducing that northbound lane to just one lane to fit the island and continue with the three-lane cross-section a little further north up here. The added benefit of the island was it was an improvement to the traffic safety at that eight mile and Evergreen intersection. This is just a short depiction of conflict points that the traffic engineers go through when they're looking at access management. And by reducing or by having an island, it reduced the conflict points from twelve points of conflict to four points of conflict. And those conflict points are just any traffic motions, any two movements that at any point intersect is identified as a point of conflict. So some of the island impacts to the project, when this was built, in order to fit the island and still allow the traffic coming westbound on eight miles to make that turn, that corner had to be pulled back quite a bit at this location. So this was the old curver turn, and this is the curver turn as it stands today. And that's just so the trucks could make the turn without driving over the new island. Added about fifteen thousand in road construction costs. I had to relocate a DPE utility pole and wires, which was an eleven thousand dollar bill, and then a right-of-way acquisition from the property owner. That was really just paperwork and hitting people's meetings because that Rastock property did donate the actual right-of-way there, so there was no land acquisition cost, right? So now that it's in, the concerns of the gas station owner, if you'd like, I can kind of read through some of these if you want to flip to the next that shows the aerials. So now, northbound Evergreen travelers cannot directly turn left into that gas station because of the island. To get to, if they're coming northbound on Evergreen and they want to get to the gas station, they have to hit eight mile, hit that first crossover, and then use the eight mile entrances. And I just wanted a big enough view so that you could see scope-wise where those crossovers are, how far from the intersections they are. These ones aren't too bad. You know, some intersections, the crossovers can be pretty far, but this is a pretty major intersection, so that's not too bad there. But customers leaving the station, though, that want to go northbound, they do have to come south to eight mile, hit the first crossover, second crossover, and then head north. So the gas station owner, you know, this is also a convenience store, and he has a lot of customers that are up in the neighborhood, and that's what he was concerned about in the neighborhood north of the eight mile, that, you know, this is a lot of extra driving for them. And what we're seeing happening is some drivers are illegally turning left out of that Evergreen drive approach anyway, kind of waiting for traffic to clear, and a little bit driving on the wrong side of the road for the short stretch until they can get past that island and come back over. The other major concern of his was that his delivery trucks typically take westbound eight mile before the island was there, and they would come up onto Evergreen and hit that Evergreen drive approach. So they've come this way, kind of angle across here and get in. Not really the safest situation to begin with because they're kind of angling directly across, and if they are having to wait for southbound traffic to clear, they could be obstructing the roadway there. So what the fueling trucks have been seeing doing since then is to use the eight mile drive approach. They can't pull in straight there, so they're backing in off of eight mile coming during non-peak hours and backing in there. The truck turns, because we do run this when we put that island in, trucks are able to make that turn if they're heading southbound on Evergreen, and they can make that swing in there. They would have to reroute their trucks.
Do you control the walk-through motions, what they're doing on eight mile now?
So right now, it was a laser.
Usually like a truck, Lee.
Yeah, it's my truck.
Yeah, kind of more.
It's more clear this way. So what they're doing right now is they're coming through, stopping here, and then backing in because his tanks are back in the northwest portion of his property there. And they used to just come here and enter this way. So the way that they can make it without having to back in is to reroute to come down southbound Evergreen, and the trucks can make that turn.
And that driveway was designed for it to work that way?
Correct.
If they, if they either come down eight mile and made a kind of a sneaky turn into the station, how did they get out? Because there are pumps there, and how did they get back out on eight mile or?
I'm guessing that they turned back around this way, and maybe they have to maneuver a little bit within the site, but I haven't heard of that being a concern one way or the other. Coming in off of Evergreen was the way that they used to come in, so they must have got some way of maneuvering within the gas station property. I don't believe that they ever have gotten back out of the gas station.
Yeah, it seems like a pretty close maneuver to turn a semi around in that pump yard.
Yeah, they must swing around. I mean, this is a canopy, so this doesn't go all the way to the ground. So it may be that, depending on what the height of the trucks are, that they don't have that much trouble swinging. If they cut the corner a little bit, they may be underneath that canopy. So that's really the background and what the existing situation is right now. And what we wanted to do is to present some of the different options of, you know, what we could do here. And obviously, the first one is to do nothing, leave the island as constructed, have the delivery trucks rerouted to southbound Evergreen so that they can make those turns. We would request some, or suggest some additional regulatory signage to prevent some of the illegal turning maneuvers that are happening right now at that island. Some people, even, obviously not a big truck, but even in a passenger vehicle, are coming up and using it as a little U-turn turnaround, which should not be permitted, is not permitted, but we could add signage for that. We're kind of, we're holding off a little bit on adding anything else, you know, just want to move forward with landscape plans or additional signage plans until we get some direction from council on how we wanted to proceed here. Also, Fred had mentioned before the, to explore cross-access rights from Harp and Auto Parts. You kind of see it on this. This is the Harp and Auto Parts store, and they do have a screen wall along the north property line, but here is the spot where it's just a wall, it's kind of.
Do you put out where the detector lopes up, though it's on the westernly part of the space?
Yeah, I don't know exactly where. I mean, I can see manholes here, so I'm thinking that these are the filling locations there. Yeah, and.
And that was the concept, that the wall between the two would be an opening, and a truck could circulate all the way around.
Right, and on that aerial view number seven, that might be a little easier to see. So if they were coming westbound on eight miles, the trucks would turn north on Evergreen, and then turn onto West Haven is that first cross street north of eight mile there, and then turn into the Harp and Auto Parts. They can look this way and turn in.
Or come off of eight mile the other way. At West Haven, turn right.
Oh, and be able to drive straight through, yeah.
Why don't you point that out?
They came down eight mile this way, pulled straight in here, and then their vehicles could go straight through. And that could be a gate, you know, just limited access for, you know, delivery trucks. Or, you know, depending on what the property owners were agreeable to, it could be something that's left open. That's something we could talk to the planning department about because if that were opened up, then passenger vehicles as well, the people that live in these neighborhoods could come through there to, to get, move from the gas station. But that's just something we have a little less control over as far as being able to force the issue. We do have contact with both the Harp and Auto Parts with that owner, and of course, with the gas station owner, so we could help facilitate those type of discussions.
And if I may, Madam President, that may be the quickest and the cheapest way to get relief on this, because the island, the construction time on removing the island would take when?
Well, to remove the island, we really have to wait till the MDOT project closes out because if that project is still open for countless items and restoration. And as long as it's open, and if we do any work there with that contractor, it's going to be a modification to that MDOT contract, which they would ultimately have approval of. And MDOT may have something to say with the way we pulled the curver turn back to accommodate the island. If the island were going away completely, they may want to see that curver turn back forward to where it was to minimize the pedestrian crosswalk length. So that one kind of has to be done after the MDOT project is complete, which really should be, I would imagine, in the next couple of months, that that project will substantially close out and be decreed forward with any work. So just to go through, yeah, I'll stay on this screen for you and the people in the audience here and just talk through the full island removal. You can see that island is about eighty feet long. This is the northern limit of it. Comes all the way down to just north at the crosswalk. And that entire island could be removed, which would permit the left turns in and left turns out, the way it functioned previously. And the estimated cost is about thirty-two thousand dollars. Almost half of that is the traffic control to make that happen. For the construction work to happen in this location, we really have to close the northbound Evergreen traffic, so they would have to be detoured to take left or another route as opposed to coming up here. At least close during the working hours when they're working, probably open it back up in the non-work hours until that's filled, just to give them somewhere to work from. The other option would be a partial removal, leaving just this, an orange, smaller eyelid, about twenty-five feet long this way, still have a little landscaping, still do a small sign. And that would also permit the turns, the left turns in and out, probably more likely to cause more frequent red lights on northbound eight miles. Because if you've got a truck or any kind of large vehicle, and they're having to wait for that southbound traffic to clear, it's similar even to before construction, but when the island's there, it's a little exaggerated that people have a harder time getting their full vehicle in that middle lane so they can wait for traffic to clear. Otherwise, they're kind of blocking, and everyone will just queue up in that across eight miles that's coming northbound. So a partial island removal is about twenty-seven thousand dollars, the estimated cost, pretty much the same traffic control, just a little bit less in the actual construction costs of doing that work. And it should be noted that the property owners have said, you know, if that island goes away, and I don't, I don't think he really has a preference whether it goes away fully or partially, as long as people can get in and out. But they, you can see the new curb line. I just pointed it out right here. This is the new curb line, and this is the old curb line here. So he's got a lot more green space. This is where the sidewalk now is. So this is all a green space area. And the property owner has offered that if we make this island go away, that he would be agreeable to doing some type of Southfield entrance sign in that corner that's partially in the right-of-way and probably partially on this private property.
How long has that business been there? How many years?
I don't know.
Well, yours should be. Who owns that island?
Who owns the island? Well, the island is owned by the City of Southfield, it's our right-of-way.
Okay. Well, we're going down there to look at it. How long are we? Are we taking a ride down there to look at the place?
Right, we're going to go look at it so you can see firsthand. Sometimes it's a little easier to see, you know, to conceptualize that and what's going on there. There will be plenty of traffic, so we'll see how people are.
Who initiated the, this whole thing?
Well, council and administration had approved that island going in as an entrance gateway into the city. And to be honest, I can't really remember if the council said it first or if the administration said it first, but, you know, that was one of those elements that came before council, like it would be nice to do an island here, and everyone was in agreement, certainly with the unforeseen impact that it's having on this gas station. Now, when he's, he's talking about his sales being down, and I can't really speak to any of that. If I'm, I think more than anything, he's probably getting, you know, complaints from some of his customers that would just have to drive a little further out of their way to get to his station and his convenience store.
Is that island attached to the station?
No.
Where is it located?
It's in the median of the road. If you go back to the first picture.
So what did, what did it have to do with the initial property on the, on the station?
It had nothing to do with the station.
Is there roadway between the island and the station?
Yes. So we have not closed any of his driveway approaches. There, everything is still accessible. It's just the way in which the customers and the delivery.
How wide is the road between the, the median thing you talked about and the, and the station property?
Well, there's two lanes there, the lanes being twelve foot width each, so twenty-four feet. One lane being a two-lane that continues south and one a turn lane.
What age level is it now?
Well, that's up to council's discretion. We're still just going to have the two lanes southbound, and in the center lane, if you will, the rest of the road, it's just that center left turn lane. That's wide open, that people can enter into to make the left turns. It's a lot residential here, so that was a safety improvement for this road widening here to go from a two-lane road to a three-lane.
We added curbing gutter, edge training.
Right.
A mile and a half of sidewalks?
Yeah, somewhere around there, maybe a mile of sidewalk. We had intermittent sidewalks on each side of the road.
Before, we just had a soft shoulder.
Right, it used to be gravel shoulder. And so now, the curbing gutters, the road didn't really widen too much more because of the way the gravel shoulders were before.
And there was no turn lane. And when you looked at the crash data, you would have someone, you had a two-lane road, someone would stop, back up traffic, waiting to turn. By adding the turn lane, you have a safe, you have a safer road today.
Do you have a record on the accident? Do you have a record of the accidents at some place, of what you just said?
The crash study would have been done before the project, right?
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, as part of the process, a crash study would be done. It would have probably been about two and a half years ago now that that phase would have been done, but we could, we could pull it out. There was a fatality on the section.
I asked if you had accidents there, yes or no?
Yes.
How many?
I don't have it with me.
Well, I don't know. I'd like to see it myself, if I can go down later and see it. Because I think it's the beginning of taking, but I may be wrong, but I'd kind of see it.
Well, we could get the history of what was happening, of the flash events, because that's a standard thing we do with any of our road projects I'm designing, is we analyze what's happening, the crash data and such.
You've got to show that to me. Because if you're going to spoil this man's business, it's doing harm to him. I understand, I heard at the gasoline dealer, it's going to charge three hundred dollars extra to come to his station.
We have two, two copies of communications from his wholesale distributor. One referenced a hundred and fifty dollars, and another one referenced a three hundred and fifty dollars increase. I can't, I don't know what the exact charge is or if there is one.
Why should you do that?
But we have provided, and they could come in off of eight mile, or they could come in off of Evergreen. And we never said, you don't have access.
Right, he's got, he's got drive-in from Evergreen and a drive-in from eight mile. We have not taken his property. We have not taken his property.
So why is the wholesale charging extra money?
Apparently, they don't want to go north and come back south on Evergreen for some reason.
It's too bad.
Extra work, I guess.
Who owns the?
Well, they do come, they come south.
Who owns the wholesale, who's assigned him?
I don't know who, I don't know who the wholesaler is.
Um, here, Bazy? And it's probably the, uh, Basco, B-A-Z-C-O Enterprises.
How long have you been in business?
The station, how long has it been in business, do you know?
I don't know.
Well, we'll look at it later. Something, I feel something isn't right. Looking at it later, I'll say. See, sometimes the nationality of the owners give in to government instead, like they do all over the world. And this guy's afraid to say anything, do anything, but the authority has come in, he has to. But now, I don't know. All I can say is, oh, I don't get an answer to anybody, everything is new. We'll see later.
You know, I thought that we were going to go directly down there before we had a meeting, and then come back here and have a meeting. I think he should have been here for this meeting because he couldn't answer.
He should have been invited to this meeting. He speaks for himself.
Well, he should have been, he should have been here because we're talking about things that he's not here to, you know, for us to hear from inside. I was down there last week, early last week, because he came in to this, came into the building, and I saw him at the doorway, and I said, I was going up from the other side of town, so I thought I'd come by there. Late afternoon, and I could see people making a left turn onto Evergreen going north from the gas station. Cars are doing that, because that's a dangerous thing because they're in the, you know, there's the traffic coming this way. But he, there were petitions that he sent to the council of, from the neighbors, many of the neighbors, they were saying, we have such a problem for them now. I just wish he was here to hear what the instructor, he could respond because we're, there's just the anxiety to me. I thought he would do that.
We can correct a wrong thing, and not, not a project, not a, not a major project on this property, on his, on his business. That's, that's why it's, I can't.
Well, excuse me, I, I do, I mean, he did, he did fill in to a letter that they were charging a three hundred dollar delivery fee because they had to go around. They can't, they can't go into the driveway and back in. I mean, I can't answer that, what the tanker can do. I don't know what legitimately they can do, but when I saw the way the traffic was behaving, and the way the drivers were behaving, they're going to make a left turn, and they need to put a sign up there, they're going to make a left turn. And that, that is a part of the problem, it's not the whole problem. And he did offer, he did say to me, that this was, oh, it was Thursday, late afternoon, it's about three thirty, four o'clock. Anyway, I drove down there to look at the whole thing, to see for myself, and how the traffic was going. And he said the corner of his property, under his sign, he would donate to the city to put a welcome, you know, to Southfield. And the only advantage there is that sign on the median isn't going to be, you know, it's going to be facing south, and people going this way are not going to see it, but it would be an advantage on the corner because people coming, you know, crossing out of this street are coming, going left. But I, I mean, it's a dangerous situation right now. And I don't, I don't, I don't think signs are going to.
How many years, what do you have? How many years, and now you say it's a dangerous?
I, so I observed it was a dangerous situation, and there's a good hour watching it. It looked dangerous to me because of the way, I mean, somebody said they put a sign up, I don't know if it was police, someone talked about putting a sign up. People are going to do it. They were turning, somebody's coming south, and somebody's coming out of the gas station and turning in a, in that lane, which is just a long way.
People do that near the station every corner, everywhere else.
I know, I know, I know. I know they do, but this one's so narrow, then it's very dangerous.
Well, let's not make a decision until we actually.
I just wish he had been here because he could respond to some of it.
It is only, it's, as the city engineer, we showed this data, I don't recall the genesis of how this idea, I know we did the bus tour, and when we were done with the bus tour, there was this concept, let's put this island in as a way of common traffic. Part of any engineering project, we analyze crash data, we, the turn lanes put in, sidewalks were added, curbing gutter to deal with the water issues. And then, the original engineering, as was shown on earlier, when you looked at the way the trucks were coming in, they were coming in off of westbound eight mile, cutting across Evergreen and going into the driveway. All the driveways are the same. He always had three driveways. He still has three driveways. He has the same number of accesses. But the trucks used to come in and block Evergreen and pull in. I don't believe that to be a safe situation, nor do I believe the way they're coming in right now and blocking all of eight mile to be a safe situation. This was designed so that the trucks would come in off of Evergreen and turn into that driveway and cut across without blocking Evergreen or eight mile. Now, I want to read these three letters from Basco Enterprises, February first. If I may finish real quick. if I may finish real quick. Dear Mr. Fazal, please be advised that our deliveries to your location will have to be changed due to the issues of safety. We are no longer able to use the Evergreen entrance due to the median. At this time, we are unable to bring deliveries in peak traffic hours, and this will be assessed to determine which trucks we will be able to use. Additional freight charges may result of this, so please keep that in mind. May twelfth, uh, second notice. After reviewing, after review of our delivery situation, you will be assessed an additional fee of a hundred and fifty dollars due to the entrance and exit of our tankers. We will continue to work with you until a resolution is achieved. Please keep in mind that the deliveries will not be made during peak traffic hours. May twenty first, after further review of your delivery situation, you will be assessed an additional fee of three hundred and fifty dollars due to the entrance and exit of our tankers. We will be sending additional personnel to assess, to assist our drivers with directing traffic. It becomes a safety issue with cars not allowing our trucks to safely enter the facility. It will, we will continue to work with you until a safety resolution is achieved. Please keep in mind, um, that the deliveries will, will not be made during peak traffic hours. I want to speak to two issues. The first is the actual deliveries of these tankers. What was happening before was blocking Evergreen. What is happening now is blocking Eight Mile. I agree, that is not a safe situation. I, I personally think the safest route is some type of crossover easement between him and his neighbor, where a truck comes in off of Eight Mile, turns, and then loops right back around. That's the safest thing. The second safety issue is, and I have probably spent two hours at the site, all, over multiple times, and I finally on Saturday morning, saw someone making the illegal left, uh, onto Evergreen. And that situation clearly is not safe either. You know, so I think we actually have two safe issues, two safety issues, because even if the island is gone, it is not in the community's best interest from a public safety standpoint that he, that the tankers continue to come in the way they were before, because you were blocking off Evergreen Road too. So if we're gonna talk about safety, let's, you know, look at both issues. And, you know, so, the administration's not married to the island. I, I wish I could remember the genesis of
We were talking about, we were talking about making entrance points into the city to beautify the city, and put some sort of land safety there, so that was the premise for the island, if you want to beautify entrance
And we're talking about something, welcome, welcome, well, I don't know, something, welcome to Southfield, or just something
To beautify the entrance, and I think we need to remember that was one of the
Could it be that the tanker driver is making a mistake and not doing the right thing? Can he block another way? I'm assuming he can, but he's doing the, he's pulling in, blocking the road, you are blaming the
At a, at a minimum, we would encourage the tanker to come in off of Evergreen and cut into the Evergreen driveway and load up.
I have never seen any gas tanker in the, in the station blocking any, any road. They pull in, the, the, the opening of the gas deposit thing is in the middle or the side of the, of the station, not close to the road. So how could they block the road unless he deliberately doing that, the drivers? They're finding maybe the easiest way to him, you know. Can that be? Yes. You're just doing what he, what, what the, what the gas delivery company is telling you. I'd like to see for ourselves, before we make a decision, and say they're blocking the road. Maybe they're violating everything.
No, I was, I'm just gonna say something similar to what, um, see with that, I was just curious as to what the crash study, what difference it showed from before to after, because we could talk about what that difference was as part of our discussion before we go about pulling up, tearing out fifty, fifty thousand dollars worth of stuff to put down or something like that. Safety is important to us, so I think that, you know, I think we get to that same point as well. But, I think, we can find a solution between the driver and
The driver does do that.
But I think that either way it goes, the way they set up now, they're gonna have a problem.
They created a problem, they created, if we find they, they created a problem, we will have to move. We'll have to do something. Use our authority to do something. If you can't put this guy out of business, that's what's happening.
And I'm wondering if maybe the, the fuel delivery, or the, um, other large truck deliveries that he has, whether it's fuel, or product, or the station, I wonder if they're aware that they can make the turn if they come southbound on Evergreen. That's not a conversation that we've had.
All right, you see, there are other questions, before you make a decision, and you blame the station, everybody.
Right, if, if there's going to be any work, it's not gonna happen in a week from now anyway, so we certainly can gather more information, we'll drive down and go take a look, and come back with some additional information that you've requested.
That's right, we'll do that.
Yeah, I got into this because the gentleman came up to my office, this was last fall, and complained that this island was going in, and if you recall, you're absolutely right. I'm not sure, that, he wanted to beautify the entrance way, and, and he just said, yes, it seems like it's an island. I don't think at any time did we really pay attention whether or not we were cutting off traffic to any of the businesses. We just said it would be nice to have an island there. And so consequently, what happened was that as the island started going in, he figured out he couldn't get any service to the station. And this was last fall, and that, we said to him, and, and I said to him, we're talking, we're gonna look at it in the spring. Well, this is already summer now, and we're so, haven't made a decision on that. Now, as far as we're talking about safety, and there's no doubt in my mind that this is probably twice as unsafe as what is presently there, if he, if he starts backing up onto Eight Mile Road, and, and, uh, anybody who drives Eight Mile knows what, uh, the traffic's like.
You mean, you mean truck drivers are backing up?
Yeah, they gotta back up onto Eight Mile Road to get out of there.
But they're not in the right place in the first place.
Right.
They're not in the right position in the first place, they're not
No, they have to come out there, it's one way you can get out.
Forward, not backing up.
So you can't go forward, because there's a wall there.
But there's stations all over, smaller than this one, there's no problem with the trucks there.
It's a lot, it's between, it's between, it's between, it's between the, the business and the property, the property of the gas station. So you gotta pull in up the Eight Mile Road and go straight in and drop your gas. Then you have to back right out of that, like you go into your driveway, you back out onto Eight Mile Road. And, and it wasn't mentioned, people were going, uh, west on Eight Mile Road, I've seen this happen now, is that after it was mentioned at the last meeting, I went down there, and people who want to go south on Evergreen Road, go in there and do a U-turn, so they get off, and come right back down, and then they go south on, on Evergreen Road, so now, they go around the island, with a, with a car suit.
Yeah, that's something that regulatory
Is there a side street where the truck can go forward and come onto the main street?
Well, that was cut off.
No, it isn't.
Right there, that, that barricade there is what you see, it doesn't allow, you see the driveway there? See the driveway to your left?
All right, while we get there.
Okay, let me finish up what I have to say there. Uh, so, so anyway, so I, I look at it, you know, way back, and I think, yeah, I mean, if I own that business, being a small businessman, I said, you really have cut off my traffic, both for the west and the west, who used to come in off of Evergreen Road and then go out Evergreen Road. Now, it's either they have to go out onto Eight Mile Road, go across the four lanes, go to the U-turn, go all the way back through a light, come back around, go through another light, come back around, go through a light, and go to see north. That's, that's if you want to get anything out of that sort, the neighborhood, you know. And so, so, you know, I think
Tell me where Eight Mile is.
Well, this here is a crosswalk on the north side of Eight Mile, it's easier to see you on the
Put that up there.
There you go.
So here's Eight Mile.
All right, it doesn't matter, we'll see.
Now, anyways, the man, the man that, said he got the letter from the gas company, and then I proceeded more, I talked to that, I talked to council, and I said, something's gotta be done, either remove, they, and I call it a barricade, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, but how did you know that the, the company is, is telling you to do?
Well, backing out on Eight Mile Road, you have to have a man there to stop traffic, you best, we've had a lot of conversations going on. And, so anyways, now you have all those turns, you're talking about the few turns that are on your map. They, if you look at all the, all the curves, if you had to stop over there and dip your gas even, then go back home, you gotta come off across Eight Mile Road, come to that, on the left-hand side there, you'll see the roundabout, and you go, but out to the center, which is Evergreen again, there's a stoplight there. You continue on around to another roundabout, then you come back, and there's another light right there. You got, all right, so you get across Eight Mile Road, come around, stay near your left, come here, make another round, go across another four lanes of traffic, and then goes, then goes, uh, north. And, and, and so, I mean, all those different movements, I mean, there's, you know, there's nothing to, to look at as far as accidents now, but, you know, accidents are bound to happen. And backing up on that Eight Mile Road with a tanker, you know, I don't know if there's enough money to do that for this person, you know? And the man said, finally, the last time I talked to him, he said, I don't fret. And he said, you put three thousand dollars towards whatever you had to do with the island, to remove it, so that his, his operation gets functionable again. And so, I, I think he is hurting, I think he's, I think the neighborhood is hurting, because they can't get, you know, the neighborhood comes down, and they go up the wrong side of the street, and then turn over to the east of the lane. So you got that kind of movement's happening over there. So, I think, uh, you know, I know it's a tough decision, because you're talking about a lot of money. And you're talking about, you know, who made the mistake, I don't think you can put blame anywhere. I mean, whether he didn't come to the meetings, or nobody talked to him, or we made the decision, and, and we didn't get the full understanding of the turnarounds that people would make, or knowing what the business did. But now, we, we've got a problem on our hands. And, and I really feel sorry for this guy, and like I said, he pays twenty thousand dollars in taxes a year. He wants to give three thousand dollars towards his project, so, so it's really hurting him. And, and I think we have to make a decision of how we can alleviate his situation. And, and do it probably inexpensively within, uh, you know, you have the only, the same kind of a thing as Siawassee and Eight Mile Road, if those people drive, uh, Eight Mile Road and go up Siawassee, you got that little triangle there, it isn't even big enough to put a tree on. So, and, and that's existing today, if anybody goes that way. And so, so I don't know what the answer is, all I know is that this man should have some kind of a relief. And, and I really feel sorry, like I say, as a small businessman, and, and only when you are impaired from doing business do you really feel the hurt every single day, that you go into the office, you know, you have to figure out how you're gonna do business. And, and they throw these things up, you know, the gas companies, they couldn't care less. Three fifty, one fifty, whatever it is, you want the gas, pay it. And, you know, there's no alternative to it. So, uh, you know, I, we have, tonight, we have under eight, eight, you know, we're doing a eight, no, it's a, it's a changeover to eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, on Northwest Street, one mile. Now, one mile, we're doing, we made that, that out tonight, to do an eight
We're talking about the gas
So just a minute. Uh, 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 sorry, I, Sydney. Sydney, we're talking about a changeover that the city's gonna have to commit, eight hundred thousand dollars on one mile. All right, that's almost like putting in an extra lane, when you put up, if a million dollars a mile, you're gonna be, be able to buy eight hundred thousand. So I'm saying is, we're talking about the difference to alleviate a man's business here, tax paying customer, then we should do something to alleviate his problem. And, and, and I just think that, you know, don't want to put blame anywhere, but I, I feel sorry for the guy, I really do. If that was my business, I would be pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, um, a couple of questions. Uh, when you started your presentation, I think you said it was in August of two thousand thirteen, when the concept of the island came up? So the, the plan had already been designed, and letters went out on the original, uh, plan. Did he come to any of the meetings on the original form?
No, we just had one public meeting, and that was in July of two thousand thirteen. So that, before any communication went out with the residents, the island was already there.
So we knew the, what the plans were, and then we added the island, the board, the information went out to the, to the residents or the business?
Right, and that's just really because our, our funding that we're going after is four years in advance, so that initial application for funding did not include the island, we just haven't gotten that far within the design yet. But it's very early in the design process is when that island was added, so that was before the, the property owners probably even
Okay, so it wasn't that he had an opportunity to see the original plan and say, oh, I know that, and it doesn't look like any problem, and then the plan, when the island came on, and he says, I've already seen the plan, so I guess I'm gonna go to the next meeting.
He would not have had that opportunity.
Okay, all right. The other, the other question is, assuming we're, we do something, and we want the, the, uh, uh, gas delivery trucks to go south on Evergreen Road. Today, they come down Eight Mile Road, which means they come from someplace east of his gas station. How would a detour work? Where would a, a fully loaded gas semi go to be north of, they're coming from the east, to be north of the station, so that he can come down south on the Evergreen Road?
Nine Mile. So instead of taking Eight Mile, they can take Nine Mile, we have a gas station right at Nine Mile and Evergreen. Another one at Nine Mile in Southfield, I don't know if there's one at Nine in Greendale, I can't sure right now.
So, uh, if they come down Nine Mile, well, depending on where they come from, because if they come from the south, and then go west on, on Eight Mile, at the bridge, if they, let's say they come from Greenville Road, they're going north, and they can, they turn and go down, uh, Eight Mile, that's not a Michigan turn. But if they, if they have to go up to Nine Mile on Greenville, that would be a, that would be a Michigan turn, because you have to go north of Nine Mile, and make the turnaround, and come back down by the advanced building, and then
Right.
and make a right turn to get to Evergreen.
I mean, to me, if the truck know that they have to come southbound Evergreen, that's up to them to figure out what's the best, you know, routing for their vehicles.
Well, I know, but this is everybody's problem, including ours. So, when we solve the problem, we don't want to make it worse for everybody, fix it for him, make it worse for the, the truck driver.
Well, for the general public, it's
Yeah, they have, they're driving cars, they're driving cars. They're driving cars, they're not driving semis. So, uh, you have to, when you solve a problem, you should solve it for everybody, not fix one person and create a problem for somebody else. That's my two, that, those are my two questions.
Yeah, you know, when I, when I went out there, what surprised me, I remember when we talked about bringing the island in there and putting it in the walk-in to Southfield. And I, when I saw it, when I actually saw it, I expected it to be like a third of this long, if it is, it would be closer to the front. And I was shocked to see how long it is, that seems to me to make it worse for the people going out, because they are making that left turn from the gas station, going all the way on, on, on Evergreen. But that, that really stunned me, because I thought it was going to be more of an island, so that we can have a welcome Southfield sign, not a whole, I mean, the so I, I think it could be, not an engineer, and I'm not trying to do, but, like I say, the length of it seems to cause more of a problem than it creates it. And I'm just wondering if, if taking like two thirds of that away and making it a smaller island, even if we can have the welcome sign, if that would, um, so, if it won't solve all the problems, if all the problems, it's because of what's always been there, but it would solve most of the problems. Just putting it out there.
I, excuse me, sir.
Alright. I, I use this topic at the, uh, I don't remember Eight Mile being attached to the gas station. I know Evergreen, and I think the doll is through there. What is the first?
Naidal, Naidal is way north of there.
No, well, whatever the street is.
So the first street north of Eight Mile is West Haven, that goes to the west.
Okay.
And that gas station was improved at some point, and I, I know, I hesitate to say when it was, because I don't know for sure, I believe it was in the nineteen nineties. So it probably used to be the more traditional tiny little gas station.
It's a big station.
Yeah, now it is, a big station.
After the trucks, uh, back up to, uh, to, to Evergreen, the big station, pumps are in the center over in another place.
Well, that's the pumps, but where they fill them, I guess, is towards the, the northwest part of the station.
Well, let's see tonight where the, where the, uh, the tanks are, the, the gas. I, I don't think we should say anything until we see it again, but we, we have to see that.
And we are gonna go on the tour, and check that, that instrument, we're gonna give everybody that.
Are we gonna take another question?
We are, after we get the discussion here complete.
Oh, that'll, that'll set off.
Two questions. The owner sent a letter saying that he insured a hundred and fifty dollars, and then another letter stating three hundred and fifty dollars. Is that five hundred total, or is it three fifty? I mean, it's not, it doesn't have anything to really do with this, but it's, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a final assessment of three fifty per delivery.
Okay. The first one was one fifty, the second one was upon further, they increased. Review. Uh, after further review of your delivery situation, will be assessed additional. We shouldn't allow that. Due to the entrance. He wants to put him out of business and buy the business. That's what they do. I know that. First response should have been, you have your tanker coming off of Evergreen, that is the safest situation. Our second safety issue is cars making the decision to go left. And that is concerning, because people are entering in to southbound Evergreen traffic for a brief period to make a left-hand turn. Tell me later, when, when we get to the station, okay?
Alright, Mr. Mandabom.
So, the other question is, would it make sense if, whatever we decide, to still block somehow cars trying to make that left turn onto Evergreen, so either, not necessarily a meeting, but sometimes they have, you know, like the little plastic sticks or something like that in the street, that may be a little, you know, may help with some of the things. My other question is, when he, when the tankers, and again, maybe more clear ones were there, but if the tankers are coming in off of Evergreen, they're obviously, they're not backing up, they're leaving through, um, off of Eight Mile. So, is it possible for them to go in Eight Mile and then go out on Evergreen, and like reverse how they're currently bringing in the delivery, or is there not enough room?
How long are these tankers, you know? Seventy feet? That's part of the, is the tankers are, when the station was built, they were, the delivery systems were a lot smaller. Now we've got seventy to a hundred and five foot tankers. It's the same thing on all the gas stations, so why are we talking about just him? And you gotta solve all the spaces, it's a couple of thousand spaces, it's gotta smaller than his place. But as far as I see, they go forward and out, not back. Then go back, it's a dry as hell.
Mr. Mandabom, this morning, I have some comments.
Well, I just wanna ask if, if it's, if, if shortening that would make, make an improvement, not having to be so long?
Well, this, the one option of making it just a short island here, that would be about twenty-five feet long, and when you say improvement, that would be an improvement to the gas station owner, because it would allow left in and out. You know, then, you know, we're back creating more conflict points as road owners.
Because of the left turn, because of the left, left turn?
Right, because of the left turn.
They're doing it anyway.
Well, I mean, I haven't talked to police or anything about enforcement, because, you know, right now, there's nothing planted in there. It could be that, you know, once it gets landscaped, people aren't gonna have the clear vision, hopefully they would stop making the left turn movements, or we could talk to PD about enforcing the no left turns, I mean, you get a few tickets for the illegal motion, and it will minimize some of those illegal movements. Um, you know, when traffic's light, I'm sure people can see far, they can tell no one's coming, and they, they decide to risk it, but I mean, they're doing something illegal, and we don't have to go over, you know, the, the illegal turns that, I mean, they should not be making those left turns.
I know, but you know, we, we really haven't solved the problem, I think we just made it worse.
And it's, when are we gonna go?
After, I, I'd like to say, I think the key thing to remember is, when we approved this island, it was for purification of the business, and the owner did not attend any of the meetings. I'm, I've already driven down there, and I've looked at it, what our engineering company and firm has done is reduce the conflict points from twelve to four. So they've done their job, the engineering company has done their job with the assignment that we've given them. Um, I'm just not sure if removing the entire island is gonna solve the problem. Um, I like what, uh, Mr. Mandabom said, maybe putting, you know, those cones or something on the road, but the key part is safety. So removing the, like, island is not gonna bring safety to that area. Um, but I, I have to agree with our engineers, what's there has reduced the, the conflict in the traffic, and has improved the traffic flow. So let's take a look, and we'll go down, and then we'll come back next week.
Yeah, um, I think his argument is that his gas station is a destination, like, for the neighborhood, and he's, I guess his argument would be that the bulk of his, his customers come from the neighborhood, and they aren't going, rather than casual traffic, either coming down Evergreen or casual traffic going down, uh, Eight Mile Road, because I talked with him, and he says, I can't, I can't, I'm losing money, because the people aren't gonna make all these turns to get back to their home. So, if the bulk of his, his, uh, traffic in that station for either, uh, gas or loaf of bread, or whatever it is, if that's, they're all coming from the neighborhood, uh, whatever we do to keep the left-hand turns from coming out of his station is gonna drop his traffic, that's what he said. If I can't get the, the folks that come here all the time to be able to get back out easy, uh, they're not gonna come to my station anymore, they're gonna go someplace else. And I think that's the thing that we also have to keep in mind. I'm not a proponent of anything at this point, you know, I don't, I don't know if shortening the thing would raise the conflict points from four to seven, or could put it back up to twelve again. Um, but I think his argument is, the bulk of his traffic, the bulk of his income comes from the neighborhood, and whatever we do that forces the neighbors to make a lot of turns, they're not gonna come to his station, that's what his argument is, they're not gonna come to his station, they're gonna go someplace else.
Don't ever get this section.
No, it's not like this.
Alright, so we will, we have a question.
We're gonna have to turn, you know, or we'll turn and then we'll return, so we can, we can. Is there out front?
Uh, buses.
Where's Charlie?
Buses, buses are probably parked around.
The staff needs directions from council in terms of moving forward regarding the, uh, meeting at Eight Mile and Evergreen, so we've heard from everybody at the table as it relates to their concerns, and so we basically are down to three options, removing it, partial removing it, leaving it the way it is, and having the administrator talk with the auto car store possibly to have them engage in some discussion.
It can open up that circulation between the two sites.
So let's, that's what it is, removing it, having a partial removal, and leaving it the way it is, as well as staff will have to address the safety issues that still remain.
I think it would make sense to first explore trying to open up between the two properties, just because of some of the cost savings to everyone involved. Um, I know there'll be some construction to open that up, but I think it just makes most of it to look at that first, if that's not a viable option, then maybe come back and we can discuss either removing it or shortening it.
Alright, that's your.
That's my answer.
Mr. Frasier?
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, I'm just going this way. I.
I think, I think Ari has a, a good solution, uh, but I'm supporting a shortening it, uh, if, uh, if the opening between the two businesses doesn't work.
Okay.
I, um, my preference at this point is to shorten it, um, I think that would add a lot of, I mean, the problem, a lot of the problems go away with a shortening, I don't wanna exploit and take it away unless it really comes to conclusion that it's just too much. So I like Ari's suggestion, maybe, of those.
Okay. Can I ask, Mr. Mandabom? Any direction from council? If, if I may? Uh, prior to HRC leading the consulting engineering on Evergreen ten to eleven mile, does anyone have any questions?
Ten to eleven. One of the concerns, if anybody here has any questions, does it relate to ten to eleven?
Well, I couldn't hear a thing, because I was towards driving a bus, and it's a van right behind us. I mean, I have our, I'm happy with the name, but I don't know.
One of the concerns that I had when we went on the roundabout, is the quicker cut into the Friday driveway. And when you think about traffic, and you think about traffic flow, as soon as you're out of the roundabout, you can make it.
Didn't we talk about that before?
The Fridays is on our radar screen between the Traveler's Group, and we're gonna try to work something out. It may actually open without it, but, you know, we may, you know, when the site plan expires, or, or if it does expire, we may need to get a little bit more aggressive, and nudge, and nudge a different behavior. Um, and if council's willing to support that, the administration's certainly willing to pursue, uh, that, and it may be, you know, look, if you want assistance on three twenty-eights and other things, you've gotta work with us, uh, on tax abatement, saying, you've gotta work with us in making this change to, to the design. Uh, this, they have previously been approached about pushing that a little bit further south, and they just weren't willing to warm up to it, and I don't, if you even notice between the two abundant use, a future thing may be greater crossover easements on these larger pieces of property, in particular those areas in the city center and our DEA, where we have, uh, where we're permitting people to do things in the overlay development picture.
Can you weigh in on, sort of like, what we can do before then, or will we have to just suffer through it?
Uh, we actually presented a plan to Traveler's Tower to eliminate the driveway to Evergreen and let Fridays come out to, uh, through the roundabout and, and circulate around. That was rejected by the Traveler's Tower, as they didn't want that cut-through traffic. There actually is a plan that's available, that shows that driveway gone, if you will. So, uh, certainly we pushed hard to do that, eliminate that, not a thing right out of the ability, uh, but it's a right-in, right-out, so it should operate just fine, but it's, uh, certainly, there's better solutions. Traveler's Tower has refused to do that.
But isn't there a specific issue that we could enforce with the Traveler's Tower?
Well, Traveler's Tower and the roundabout and how it operates, they're, they're, they have their own concerns about that road, as they call it, that everybody uses as a road, but it's really a driveway, and not that type of stuff, and, and there's a lot of concerns about taking that front driveway over and making it a road, if you will. Well, to do that, you, you're not gonna have people backing out into a road from their parking lot, so you have to put an island all the way along that road, all the way across their frontage, and they're not interested in losing those parking spaces to do that. So, so we have had those types of discussions, and we have not been successful in doing that. And, and they, and the city did compensate them for the right-of-way to build the roundabout. I think it was about forty-eight thousand dollars for compensation just to get the land to build the roundabout, so.
Just one thing I noticed, and it more fit and finished than it is, uh, uh, substitutes, the brick spacers in between the curb and the, uh, sidewalk that run parallel with the road.
Correct.
And at that same place, right, when you come, come out of there, they did a terrible job, and I don't know how they're gonna fix it, because there's not a whole brick space in between them, but when they make the curb, I mean, square, square bricks going around a, a round corner, don't work.
Supposed to be cut, supposed to be cut, so we'll, we'll get on to this.
Okay, 'cause it looks, I mean, the rest of it looks fine, but except where they won't make the curb.
Should've been baloney.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, I have number two, the Dallas County Council, uh, you can go with each other. Shall we? Good evening, Colonel Mayor, and the board. The City of Southfield has received a request from Kiwi Hospitality Group, uh, to, for the former Holiday Inn property, uh, the property owner, J.C., is here along with their consultants. I'd like them to come forward, we have a presentation, they have requested the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district, as well as a brownfield for that site, so I'd like them to introduce themselves to the city council and go over their, um, plans, and then, um, at the conclusion of both of my items, I, I know Mr. Fraser, I'm asking for a rule pen, um, to have a public hearing, um, at the July twentieth council meetings for both of these items.
Good evening, Kurt Brower, we're in our crossing judge, um, our neighbor across the, across the road here, well, we're doing on Evergreen, and with me is J.C. Chetavarti, he's from Kiwi Hospitality, with Kiwi Hospitality, is that better? Um, we're gonna talk to you a little bit today about the proposed project, and I will say this, the last time I was actually in the old Holiday Inn, I was there, my great-aunt uncle had their fiftieth anniversary there in nineteen ninety-five, it was in much better shape than it is in now. So, uh, with that said, I'll, I'll let J.C. talk to you a little bit about what, uh, what BR Group does, and what Kiwi Hospitality proposed to do, uh, with this project, and then I'll provide some detail on the investment, and talk a little bit about the brownfield and the commercial rehab request. So, okay with that, J.C.?
Good afternoon. Good evening, the mayor and board members here, and everyone else, or the audience that's present here as part of the meeting, and thank you for giving us a chance to be with you as part of the community, because now we have found ourselves to be a part of the community, having joined you here in the city of Southfield. Um, now, I would like to know, how many minutes do I have with me, because I keep going on. So if you, if you stop me now, I will stop you. Okay, okay, so I'll keep it, I think, for ten more. Ten, it's okay? Okay, I'll take you through my memory lane, down my memory lane, when we started getting into business in New Zealand, after having migrated from New Delhi, India, we and our partners, way back, now twenty-five years ago, we went into different businesses to do, to settle ourselves and our families, you know, you, when you migrate, anyway, you do everything, we hit right from that being restaurant, owners of various chains of restaurant, to food manufacturing factory, and supplying to the like of Myers here, and these distribution, import, everything, and we became farmers. Um, I think this is not going, so I can move on. Okay.
To be done, you know, like that. So we will be looking at doing that. And to and then we will do some kind of LED lighting there, nice, but we don't want to make it a kind of a casino. A very nice, uh, lighting effects here, lighting effects here on the, uh, the, the, the trees here and, you know, the, um, landscape. Then we go into the, this is the house, the property will change into the, um, Best, Best Western Premier is the top brand of Best Western. And these are, this is what Best Western Premier are. Best Western has unfortunately had very poor image. I was talking to their, uh, owners, this is, okay, just to share with you, Best Western is not a public listed company. It is unlike others. It is a kind of concentration of owners that they do. And they do, now they've started, they are number one brand in Europe. In America, they, many people don't know, but in Europe, they are number one. In America, they entered, they, when they entered, they took whatever properties was available and then they wanted people to renovate them and people didn't do it. So they started, you know, doing the seving and all that has been done. Like for example, they were telling us in Michigan, there are fifty-two, uh, hotels. They have seaved off about twenty-six hotels already. Others are also, they're own, unless they do the gift and do it nice, you know, because they don't want to give a bad experience to the guests, the invitees there. So they are become very choosy. Now, it was very difficult for us to get them here. Because, uh, Best Western Premier is their topmost brand and they are being very choosy. So far, they have allowed only one hundred and twenty-five properties to become Best Western in the world. So they are becoming so choosy. It is not that anybody can go and this thing. So, for example, I'll give an example here. They wanted us to do the tiling and all that, forty dollars a square foot, that kind of tiling. We, we are doing reasoning with them, please, let's understand, but we'll do well. So
Actually, could you go back over the beginning and tell, give an overview of the hotel and what you're planning on doing?
Okay. Now, the overview of the hotel, what we are planning to do is, when we walked across the property even first time, we didn't, it didn't take us, we didn't have to sit with an architect to understand, we walked, set properties, we understood immediately what we need to do. Four hundred and seventeen room giant property. The way it was run before, okay, the other thing I would like to share with you, whenever, and these are some certain private things I'm telling you, but I must because you are part of my community, the first thing we do, when we buy any property, dead or old property, first thing is to find out where is the previous owner. Many times, we find the previous owners run away, run away from banks or police or anything, you know, that kind of thing happen. We found the previous owner of this property, I went and met him in, uh, New York to understand from him what was the situation. I understood a lot of things from him so that we don't commit those mistakes. You will learn from the mistakes. And what we, what I first learned, then none of these people were hoteliers except Holiday Inn. They were, somebody was mortgage broker, somebody was like, you know, uh, doing accountancy and the final owner of this premises was attending, retired or something like that. So they can't run the hotel, they don't know how to run the hotel. So that was a good plus point, we got it. Now, what we are planning to do is, this tower will become Best Western Premier. And this information is still classified because I'm just sharing in confidence, in, in confidence, I'm sharing with you, so we, you don't want that to become a part of our community. But I'm sharing with you because I need to share it with you. So that is Best Western Premier. The, there's a two-story L-shaped building here. In that L-shaped building, the first building we were thinking of making as part of this, uh, the tower, and second building as an extended stay. Because what we needed here, that you need to have ADA rooms. And ADA rooms are best kept, in our experience, we have learned, are best kept on the first floor level, or we call it ground floor there rather than going through the steps. So, so the ADA rooms will be in that two-story building and then the other side of the two-story building will become extended executive stay. It will, when I'm saying it will become, it will become in only by your support, we are trying to put those pieces together. And in that effort, we went to, uh, we approached Oakland County, that, you know, for executive stay, if they can help us with the, because they are all over, um, overseas, if they can help us with the, uh, getting here kind of a joint promotion or something for that ex- extended executive stay, because what we are seeing is the house we are now attracting a lot of overseas companies and even people relocating here and, uh, German or in Japanese, whoever is coming, so they have the best access there. Of course, we do our, our marketing, but they can, and we are still talking to them, let's see how it can go, because we need everyone's support here, putting the pieces together to make this happen, otherwise this won't happen. Again, it will become a death thing, we don't want that to happen. We have never failed in our life. We don't want to experience failure. And, and I, I assume that I am happy and we have dared to believe that we shall make it and we always make, we were dared to believe and we'd make it. I assume that all of us here are the supporting, encouraging group for us, because that is what we need. You succeed only with an encouraging, an encouragement and motivating group. If there is none, then you can't, you, you, you also, you know, even a successful person fails. So that is what we are planning on.
So perhaps you might go in and explain the staging of the redevelopment
Okay. So staging, yeah. So what we are looking at is that the tower will be the first phase of development. Tower, restaurant, uh, convention area, that will be the first stage of development. Second stage of development will be the extended executive, uh, sorry, the five-story building, which is, uh, at the backside, so will have a separate address, entry from Franklin Road and that we have finalized with La Quinta. So the brands that we have chosen are very specific brands that we have chosen, when these people walk through the property, it was a nightmare to make them understand the whole thing and convince them. They are not ready to get convinced that you are not in Detroit, you are in, out of there, and you know, you have all kind of objections coming from them. We convinced, then, then we said, okay, why did we investigate what we have done other places? So they sent teams to go and see how we have done, they were terrified, so they are now, now it's, it's closed shut, that's fine. And, and then the two-story, uh, building, we are the executive extended stay, that is what we will do. So this will run into one phase as the tower, second phase as the five-story building and then the second, uh, third stage of development. This is what we are planning to do. If you have any questions, anything, please do ask me, I will be
So would you want to kind of go over the investment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and take that.
No, definitely.
Thank you, J D, and feel free to, to add if, as needed. Um, so the, the redevelopment will start, uh, proposed to start in 2015 with the end date of that third phase being 2017. Uh, the investment, the overall investment will be twelve million dollars, uh, that's two and a half million dollars purchase price, um, about a million dollars in demolition asbestos abatement, environmental investigation, uh, and the balance about eight point five million in, uh, in rebuilding the, the property and providing all the amenities. Um, really, it's, when, when you look at, it'll create, um, seventy, seventy jobs, give or take, so, uh, a large job creator as well, uh, sufficient parking, six hundred spaces. Um, the, uh, this, this really fits well with all of the economic development that's gone on, uh, not just in, in City of Southfield, uh, with Dur Automotive and BASF and there and others really, um, you know, uh, ride the rise and tide, but also the rest of Oakland County and, and Wayne County, um, to provide a nice mix of, of places to stay. Um, so what we're, uh, we're asking for, let me talk about this, what we're asking for is for the Commercial Rehabilitation Act, uh, tax abatement, uh, that abates, the proposal is to abate the local, uh, portion of property tax, the increase, uh, for a period of ten years. Um, so the land and the personal property are not abated under that, the existing tax, uh, would freeze, uh, and then the taxes, uh, the, the base tax that's on the property, um, around a hundred and fourteen thousand plus will still, will continue to be collected during that period. Um, second piece of it, uh, we've kind of outlined the, the cost, phase one, that's a known cost, demolition, and that's interior demolition, including asbestos abatement, right? This is a building built at a period of time when there's, uh, lots of asbestos that needs to be dealt with, um, about a hundred thousand dollars. Site preparation, that's, uh, reconfiguring parking lots, um, putting in, that, does that include, by the way, um, the, the addition of, uh, the public art, so that'll be, uh, that'll be an additional piece of it, but screening the property from the street, um, and then on, um, when you look at line five, fifteen percent contingency, which is there to make sure that, you know, we think we've got the numbers right, we have a little bit of flexibility and that's apparently standard feature of Brownfield plan. Um, so the total, um, reimbursement to the developer, uh, under the Brownfield plan, uh, which is a tax capture mechanism, I believe you're mostly familiar with that, uh, will capture primarily school taxes during that, that first ten years. So for ten years, you'll have, um, you'll have the local portion of the property tax, the increase, right, just talking about the increase, abated, um, and that'll be a savings to the developer. And at that same time, uh, with also according to plan, we will capture the, the taxes attributable to the school operating village and the state education tax, um, to reimburse the developer for their out-of-pocket costs. There is an eleventh year on the Brownfield plan, which will be about thirty-five thousand dollars, I think, all in, uh, captured from local taxes as well. Um, in addition to this, um, this, this helps the city out, if you look at items seven and eight, those are really city costs, uh, we're, we're able to, as part of this plan, capture , uh, local and school taxes, uh, to pay for, um, certain costs, including the local fire remediation revolving fund, which is a pot of money that's not used at this property, but can be used at other properties for redevelopment activities of those properties, um, that the Brownfield Authority and the city can use to invest at other sites. So kind of charges your, your, uh, your purse, so to speak. And then the administrative cost, um, which is in addition to the, the applications that we pay. So, wow, that's an, so, uh, certainly be happy to, J D and I, we have entertained any questions that you've got.
I just want to frame this to council, when, when, when Ms. Freeman and I evaluate these projects, we would kind of look at a number of things. I haven't heard, what hasn't been said is, in the last, uh, since two thousand and five, about twelve hundred hotel units have gone offline in Southfield, Ramada Inn, the Michigan Inn and the Holiday Inn. And you look at that, so you know, so you've got an industry that's a mature industry with hypercompetition and a lot of the product in, in Southfield is thirty, fifty years old, is trying to compete against the new, the new young bucks coming up. Five new hotels in Troy are being built, they're in that hundred to hundred and twenty units, no more than three stories in height, even the new Hyatt built at the Suburban Collection is in that lower profile. Uh, and, and part of my message is, you don't have the hotels being built in the iconic high-rise structure. This past weekend, one was tore down in Detroit and the big debate over the, what the arena from historic preservation was to, to leave that. In my seven years here, we have spent a lot of time dealing with Ramada Inn, which the demolition ran us one point five and we were fortunate enough to split that and break even. But we had seven years of very contentious legal battles happening over that building and I can tell you in the last four months, a lot more of my time and legal's time and our DVA staff has been over dealing with the Michigan Inn. So when we look at this, you know, this building, when, when we look at it, if we were doing a Brownfield for someone in the future to clear this site, we'd probably be looking at it two and a half to three million, just for the demo. We're being asked for roughly eight hundred thousand to cap the values for ten years. So we'll continue to get the taxes that are being paid today. And after that ten-year period, we will give up part of the increment, uh, roughly eight hundred thousand. No interest is being paid on this Brownfield plan, um, to the developer, they will have that carry cost. The eight hundred thousand versus two and a half, three million for the demolition, plus the time that it would take to wrestle control of the demolition. And we're seeing a, a pattern, the, the anatomy of a demolition on a Brownfield plan is, is basically a property that will take twenty, twenty-five years of taxes that the local jurisdiction collected to take care of the demolition. And I'm going through this exercise right now, uh, when we tell the Northland story. The taxes that Northland paid to the city the last twenty-five years will not cover the demolition. And that was true for single-family homes in a lot of neighborhoods and we've got a house we took down on Lower Plain, the same story can, can be told. So we're trying to, can we more aggressively use this? The other economic development tool that we'll be using with, uh, with this group is the EV5 Immigration Program. The White House, as well as Governor Snyder, was aggressively promoting the use of the program. Ms. Freeman has, and Kurt have made some, some inlays. So we're looking at tools to do this. And when we went through, the analysis of this was it's, it's cheaper for us to be involved at this level versus tearing it down and dealing with the blight for four or five years to going through the, the legal process of getting ownership and such. Um, I do want to comment on funding the local site remediation revolving loan fund. We haven't putting that line item in the Brownfield, uh, plan, it has been permitted all along. That is a local tool, we can decide at any time that we don't want to fund that, but in this year's budget, council approved a direct line item for demolition of a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm closely monitoring with our building code department, fifty-two fire damage properties around the city. And I think we're coming to a point to where we can see our demolition, just for single-family homes in the city, hit three to four hundred thousand a year. And that's a direct hit on our general fund. So the thought process is to get capitalizing a revolving loan fund, that we would, on future demolitions, everything we demolish would be declared a Brownfield plan and that's where the funding will come to help us deal with repositioning, um, tired, stressed properties. Some we will be able to salvage, some we won't. What I like about this project is this is a very unique piece of architecture, this, the shape, the history, and if it can be salvaged, I, I, I like it. Ramada Inn, that was a tough one for some of us, the ceiling heights were low, it wasn't that descriptive of a, a, a piece of property. But I, I know this on the Ramada Inn, we'll be hard pressed to get a pro- piece of property that produces the tax yield per acre. In doing this, we might give up something in the short run. You, some may say it's not good political sense, because in politics, you need a short-term payoff and you folks will get the benefit of a project. But you're setting the stage that your successors one day will say, wow, these guys really had a lot of foresight in building revolving loan fund? In building a building to make sure that this building lasts another fifty years? There'll be perks that come with that. Your successors won't, they'll get the benefit. You folks will get the benefit in two thousand and seventeen of turning this building around, but the tax windfall will hit at a later date. Uh, you know, I apologize for that, but I think this is the most cost-effective way to make something happen on this site, other than pursue it as a future demolition.
But J C failed to mention that he is planning to make the restaurant rotate again.
No, okay, I'm, I'm just, thank you for, thank you very much, uh, for saying that this is an iconic property. I'm currently wrestling, even today, if I show you my email with Best Western Premier, there's president, you know, the old group, North American President, I'm wrestling with him, because what I want to do is, if you can take it back to the building. And, and they are saying that, you see, what I want to do is, where the signage is, I want to give the name of this iconic building as the Grand Circle by Best Western Premier, because this is a grand circle. And they are saying, no, you are undermining our, Best Western Premier has to be, you know, on top. So finally, we have come to, finally, we have come to a kind of understanding that, okay, we'll keep Best Western Premier as a bigger signage, but at the bottom, I will give the Grand Circle. I must maintain the Grand Circle here. Because why? Because in all my communications, it will be, in my communication, Best Western Premier logo will be here, but I will have my own logo also, the Grand Circle, and under that Grand Circle, I'll write, "We are not square." Anyone I want to tell the people, because people think, they're, they're, oh, rectangle building, this building, that is all right, these are special buildings, any circular, any octagonal building and all that, they are special, they, they cost you so much to do that. Thank you very much, I think if you have any question, I can answer.
I see it's a council. I think for that.
I did, I sounded like you were about to say something about the restaurant.
Yeah, restaurant, okay. Yeah, on the top, um, of course, there is restaurant on the first floor, but on the top, there is a space that we are looking at turning into a kind of a club lounge, kind of thing, you know, by invitation, uh, so it will be a very nice, uh, uh, area that we create. So why we are doing this, because I went and met a lot of companies here, for example, next door BASF or Danzo and everywhere, and they were saying that there's need for that for have to, well, you know, our senior people coming from overseas, then we can just bring them up and have meeting there in a kind of club lounge and all that. So, so this will give a lot of positive, uh, input to the international companies here. That is what I mean.
And I'm assuming this will be, this is a four-star?
Yeah, of course. Best Western Premier, whatever star it is, star, top star.
The executives on the other side, the executive portion.
Yeah, executive, uh, portion will be two-story. So, yeah, we are working on that, because right now, that two-story overlooks the convention area, which is not good. You can't have, you know, anybody sleeping in the room and looking at the convention area. We are covering that and doing that to you, that we are, we are doing.
I was excited to read about it, but I'm up next to you guys.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Tom? Is there a question?
Yes, uh, I presume the, the hotel is all cleaned out now?
Cleaned? Yeah, yeah, we are cleaning it, it's so much of rubbish.
Well, no, I mean, you took all the stuff up. The reason I ask that question is, uh, the sales, the sign up front had the same salesperson with name out for several years.
That's right, sir.
And I know there was a priest at the, the Greek church, wanted the valers that were holding the doors closed, did he get those?
Uh, there were, there was somebody who came, uh, who took those, there was some, yeah.
They were square?
Yeah, something, yeah.
And they were leaning?
And he was from a church, so he, he said that, um, can you give it, it will be good for our church, you know, uh, the thing we said is for, you know, what we do
Yes.
And we still believe in that, is that when we start something new project, we always remember God, if anything can go in the service of the God or the place of the God, we always give it. So we said, okay, you have asked for it, please take it, no problem, we will do something. So we have given it to him.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to work with the, uh, salesperson and there have been two or three different people that have attempted to buy it and then they backed out and so it never
No, no, we have given, because he wanted it in the name of church, I said, yeah, okay, no problem, take it. And that sale sign, I'll give you the answer to that sale sign. Sale sign is still there because, uh, you know, we can't start the work unless we have these things in place, because there's so much of money required everywhere, we're just trying to understand where the utility and all sort of thing. We are still keeping it there, because there is some activity going on to check the utility and all that. If you don't have the sign sale on, the spotters and the vandalizers, they think something is coming, so new material will be coming or something, and they'll again come and, you know, whatever is there, they'll take it. So we keep it, okay, maybe the guy is preparing to sell, you know, the owner is trying to sell or something, so he's just coming in, see whatever there. That is what our experience has been in such properties in the past, so we are just keeping it there.
Okay. Um, I know you, you said that the, uh, two-story building was going to be a primary for the ADA?
No, this side, with the next to the tower, uh, this one, next to the tower, the ground floor will be ADA.
Okay, now, is that going to be?
Uh, first floor, not ground floor, so here we call it in US, we call it first floor, yeah.
Uh, will that be reconditioned or re?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah.
Uh, early on in the whole process or is that phase two or phase?
No, no, that has to be done in line with this tower.
Because there are people that
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct, yeah.
That will
And then we will, we will go for part occupancy request to the city, because that is what is crucial to such development, which happens is, that you prepare, let's say, one floor, two floor, three floor, then, and with subject to safety or clearance, then you start getting people in, like the, for example, the brand will not give it their name unless you have done the whole thing.
Sure.
But then you do one, two, three, four, uh, floors as you keep going, having it occupancy done, so that you sell fifty percent value, no problem. So if your, uh, selling rate is hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty-eight later on, get some people at a lower rate, let's keep filling in people so that cash flow starts. Because you need cash, there's so much money needed in this.
Sure.
Everything you pick up. And the other thing that we are finding is difficult, really speaking, which was not the case in our developments in Denver, this was not the case in Cincinnati, in Chicago, in Houston, that there is some kind of mindset with the contractors and the, their workers that, oh, these people have bought such a big thing, so they must be having a lot of money. They don't understand that when you buy a big thing, the money goes in there to buy and you have to spend each thing. They are living in kind of, some kind of mindset, you know, for asking, okay, just we got a lift operator to operate the lift, which is sitting dead, and they said, yeah, we'll charge you two hundred and seventy or hun- no, first time, they said two hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour to operate the lift. And what will he do? I asked him, what will he do? Will he repair it? No, no, he will only manage the lift down and up, like lift operator. Now, you, you understand how much money is needed.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, anyway, I shouldn't mention that, but I just mentioned it.
Uh, there is a pool in, there is a pool in that hotel.
Yeah, pool is already shut, sir.
Pardon?
It is cemented now.
It is? It's out gone?
Yeah, it wa- it was managed there, to have the pool there, the way it was constructed and you can't do that. It's, that is why, you know, everything was created in piecemeal wrongly and all that, these ways was done was not divation.
Okay, now I'm gonna, this is not for you, uh, but for the staff. Uh, I know they're asking, you're asking for a row ten tonight. My question is, when did this plan come to us? How long have we had this plan?
Less than a month. So we went to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority on June seventeenth and due to the timing for, um, the public notices and in order to get this project, so we did not have this plan. I, I, I wish I could have timed it better and had more time, but, um, the staging of the, the different, um, the COWs and the regular meetings, I didn't have the time to bring it forward prior to that, because we had to have the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority review the plan first. So I know that your folks are doing a row ten, so I just didn't have the time and, and J C travels back and forth from New Zealand and so to accommodate everyone's schedule. It's, they are making a public hearing.
Just accept the public, just accept the public hearing.
That's what they're asking.
Just accept the public hearing. Or
That's what, that's what
That's a public, that's a public hearing.
Well, this, uh
For both, right on.
Okay. That's my question.
Yes, um, I've been hoping that someone would appreciate the maintenance of this building and, uh, I'm glad that you're a decent person.
Thank you very much for that, thank you.
I'm, I'm very pleased to hear what you're, what you're planning to do. Have you, this is probably very premature, but have you given any thought to what you will do in the landscaping?
Yeah, landscaping, yeah, we have, so we have started talking with landscape architects, because we have to start, once we start getting the support from you, from MEDC we are approaching, we are approaching Oakland.
Excuse me for interrupting, but you must have in your mind what you want us to
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, I can tell you that, that, because we do it every day, so archi- many times, and, and that is a good thing, I tell you, that we do it every day, we don't wait for the architect to suggest to us. Then when I go to my architect, I tell him, please put it here, please put it here, because he know what works.
I want to get a
So then it becomes easier for, and, and it saves cost to us. And for him, it's time. For example, here, there is a portrait shade, you know, showing, there's a, you know, where the entry of the building. So, okay, where the entry of the building is. Yeah, yeah, maybe, anyway, so this is portrait here. What we are planning to do, the first thing we are planning to do is where those pillars are, where are these, uh, posts or columns are? Between those columns, outside where the greens are, the plants are, there will be a fountain that we are putting in there. Because that is first thing important needed in a, in a, in a, kind of a luxurious feel for the hotels that we are creating. So there will be a fountain, lit, well-lit fountain at night, daytime running, and then the portrait, um, here at the bottom of the portrait, there will be so much nice lighting nowadays, you know, kind of thing. We are, we are looking at, with the height of the vehicles coming, when bus will come, bus will come, tours, bus tours will come. So we'll see that, if we can manage chandeliers, then we like to do chandeliers. If we can't manage that, then maybe we'll have some LED, uh, in the, in the inner LED effect and all that thing. I would like to share with you for the last thing that I want to say, you know, what, what is the reason we succeeded from two percent to ninety percent in Denver or we are succeeding in Cincinnati and other places? Because doing hotel business, what we find in Australia, uh, sorry, in, in, in US, in doing the hotel business in US, the hotel operators are really turned into mere housekeepers by the brands. So they put their brand, they say, okay, through our system, something will come. And the hotel operator does nothing. He's just managing the house is clean or not of them. So he doesn't grow and he can't get more customers. In New Zealand, Australia, we don't work on brand. You have to stand on your own foot to get the customers. So we get customers even from, um, whether Germany or Luxembourg or Switzerland or whatever. We do our efforts. We do, here, I challenge Choice Hotels, that we have given to, the Denver hotels, we have given to Choice under quality in after running it ourselves. And I challenged Choice Hotels, such a big group. I said, your guys are not doing the job properly because we are still not getting the kind of leads which should come in the hotel. And then, how can you say that? We said, no, I'll prove it to you. Because why I could say that, I can prove it to you because we do it ourselves back there. We know how the analytics is done, how Google Analytics is done, how we negotiate and work with Expedia, Booking.com or anyone. We talk, and these Booking.com or Expedia, such big engine or this thing, we analyze there whether they are correctly or not. We divide the day in four, no one, no, nobody even knows here. When I talk to the hotel industry here, they don't even know. They are still running, if anybody from hotels, they are still living in that old age of ADR and RAP. They have not graduated from there. The main thing is your room rate, every day rate. When I say rate of occupancy, where it comes is, they don't even know about it, the whole thing. We deal with these booking engines, how you are doing it. So we divide the day into four days in one day. Six AM to twelve, twelve to six, six to twelve and twelve to six again. Then we see which, which area is bringing the customer in those hours. Where the bookings coming from all over the world. So we know where to go and catch them there. And that is the way we have done it. And they are shocked, in fact, Choice Hotels are shocked. They said, we have not seen a quality in doing ninety percent occupancy. What are you doing? Now, we, we tell them that, we told them, this is what we do, but you do it for us.
I'm not sure. Uh, you're going, you're trying to ask some landscape architects to work with you and I'm sure you have in your mind.
Yes.
What you would like it to look like. Because we will wanna see that and approve it before it's done.
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah, we will, no, we will work it out.
Oh, it's not serious. I mean, I like what you put out the line, you know, just period. When you saw that, you must have had a picture in your mind about what you want it to look like.
We have, we have the picture, yes. Outside, outside of the hotel, all these sides will be like green. Where the trees are there, those are good trees. Right, and when you come from, uh, I ninety-six, ninety-six, there are some trees missing. We'll have to put some bigger trees there. We'll do the, uh, lighting of those trees. Then we are trying to look at, um, between the, where the fountain is side of the fountain, do a little bit of landscape kind of thing and then put the plants on those. Yeah, depending upon season, you know, what can survive for long term. So those things are there, but that we want to deal with an landscape architect so that he knows what the council requirements are in doing that. It becomes easy because, you know, we are new to the area here.
I like the fountain idea a lot.
Yeah, but that, that will work. Even, even inside the lobby, there will be a waterfall coming through.
But I mean, you have something that's moving, because that's always very attractive.
Exactly. And, and, and even the people, when they enter the lobby of the hotel, it will be, you know, the water, because there will be waterfall inside as well. So it continues from there. So we are trying to do it very nicely. I don't want to beat my drums here. When you will enter, when we open, then you'll see. Right, thank you.
Yep, just one thing. Uh, so let's just say, about what side, how large a group will you be able to, to manage for conventions?
Conventions, we have two. Now, the, uh, the other thing which has happened is that there used to be swimming pool, like you said, uh, there was swimming pool, now that has been cemented, gone. So it has become much easier for actually for the corporate and all that thing to have their exhibition, brand launches, a lot of product launches, this thing in that holiday home kind, in a big dome kind of area. So you can have your, um, eating and all that seating places in the east, this side, in the hall, and then you can have other functions, dance, party, anything there. So you can house up to, anytime, I think you can house up to four hundred, five hundred people there. Yeah.
I have a question. I know the PA two-ten is scheduled to run for this December. That will not hinder this project in the fall at all?
No, that's right.
Um, I believe there's excitement from you as well as everybody around the state.
No, thank you very much. We need support, we need encouragement from you because we have taken a big challenge here. We, we don't want to fail. We have never failed. We don't want to see failure at all. We want everyone's, you know, togetherness in that, yeah.
But we're looking for room ten at this time, council on the commercial, uh, PA two-ten.
I'll make sure.
Miss Dino, you have a motion by Miss Dino supported by Mr. Mandelbaum for room ten, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion here. Any other motion to that for the commercial?
The public here.
Oh, the public here. We have a motion by Miss Dino supported by Mr. Cruz to that for the public here for July twenty-fourth, all in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. And many thanks to everybody.
Any brownfield address? Yeah, so the thing, right, the room ten and brownfield. For the brownfield, huh? The room ten? Of course, we have a motion by Miss Dino supported by Mr. Mandelbaum for room ten for Brownfield Development Plan and tax increment by January. Any questions, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion here. For the public here. We have a motion by Miss Dino supported by Mr. Cruz to like, for the brown. Any questions? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much. Thanks, um, I'd share, if I may, uh, one of the staff, Fred and Shelley, I've been very working. The other thing that I would mention, um, JC was too modest to say it because the EV five D is just working on it, actually work as his son. So when he talks about you being a member of his community, really, he's, he is totally invested, not just with the business, but with family, who went over here to take care of that property and job that he, so he.
Yeah, my son, I'm moving my son from Australia to here.
We have winter here, you know.
And, 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 and one thing I have done, in addition to buying the commercial property, your honor, mayor, we have also bought a house in Southfield.
Right.
Just behind the property. So that, you know, just behind the property, whatever we could find, there was a three-bedroom house being on sale. We said, let's make it part of the kind of, you know, here, so.
Okay.
Part of the community.
Oh, yes, I talked about that.
Thank you very much, Shelley.
He's got a request about bringing his son here and, and nobody I know has done that before and so I wanna make sure that we get that thing rolling.
Right. We might need a couple attorneys who specialize in that. Uh, the Lansing Economic Development Group lead and then Miss Freeman, a couple people on the DC.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, so you kind of want our agenda, the wayfinding map, the key items for Southfield.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna do just a brief overview of the proposed wayfinding map for some of the interpretive panels and then Angela from Little Fish will be here to answer any of the specific questions that the council may have on any of the maps. We also have Darla from the Southfield Historical Society who assisted. So as you may recall, as part of the overall Evergreen Road redevelopment, there's some wayfinding, uh, kiosks and there's also some interpretive panels. The wayfinding kiosk is a three-sided kiosk that's proposed to be located at the south entrance of Civic Center in Evergreen and will actually be on the northeast corner on municipal property. There's a small plaza that's being developed. This is pedestrian oriented and, um, it'll include a, a district wide map similar to when you go in a mall and you go to the mall directory and you want to get oriented on where the anchors are. That'll show the whole district. Then the second panel will be designated for wayfinding on the campus. So the municipal complex will be enlarged to help people orient themselves with municipal facilities. And then the third panel will be dedicated for either programming of events at the pavilion, Parks and Rec, could be, um, reserved for additional interpretive panels or could be used for concept plans. And so this is the, again, three-sided kiosk and it's roughly four, four by six. And we have life-size maps here that we're gonna show you in a minute. Also, as part of the Evergreen Road, on the east side is a ten-foot bike path at Evergreen Halfway. And we have two locations that we've, we've identified as historic sites. One is the Mary Thompson Farm and the other is Covenant Church and the Historic Cemetery just north of the library. And each of those will have a wayfinding interpretive panel similar that you would find at national park sites or even at Carpenter Lake. Again, pedestrian oriented, uh, it's designed for wheelchair accessibility and will tell us a, a story about the significance of that site that was located there. Again, this is the district-wide map of the city center and, um, I'll, I'll let, Angela will get into the details in a minute, but this is your wayfinding directory that you would find at the mall. And it covers, uh, Evergreen Road, Civic Center, and then the city center district with the main pieces being the municipal complex and Lawrence Tech. It's cross-reference based on land use pattern and also geographic area. And what we've done is identify either major office complexes or retail centers. Um, the individual business owners could change and you'll be directed to a website where you can scan, use a smartphone or, or look at that real time for the individual property owners within, within those retail centers or office complexes. Here is the wayfinding map for city municipal complex, which identifies all the major buildings. This has been vetted through, um, most of the departments. So it'll, it'll show the main building and also down here will list some of the main services that are offered at each one of those facilities. It also includes our memorial gardens, identifying our athletic fields based on how you reserve them through Parks and Rec. And it's oriented to the east because the kiosk would be located right here and as you look at the kiosk, you will get the orientation towards the municipal complex. And again, Angela will get into the details of that. And then we have these two, uh, two-foot by three-foot interpretation panels. They're designed as an old-fashioned book that opens up and it tells the story of, um, Mary Thompson Farm and the history of her family and what the uses on the site with some historic photos. It also has a QR code that some younger members or, or more technically inclined would take you to a website and you could get more information about, about that. And it's designed as a book opening up and telling a story. And then finally, we have the northernmost interpretive panel, which talks about the history of Covenant Church and the significance of the Underground Railroad to our early history in Southfield. So that's a, that's a brief overview. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Angela to talk about, uh, some of the specifics of the map and then we'll be here to answer any questions that the council may have. And I'm gonna turn to, and like I'm for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so as Carrie was saying, when, the first thing to, to drawing the map was to establish the extent of what area do we want to show. So starting with the city center district, um, we move up beyond that to major roads to easier, quicker, get your orientation, lobster roads, uh, ten miles, eleven mile, and then Evergreen to the, the border of, um, the edge of the municipal district. This, the, the maps, the kiosk and everything that you're undertaking with the redevelopment of Evergreen Road, um, there are two parts to this. There's orientation and navigation, how a person may find their way through the city, find their destination and find your path to that destination. But there's a second thing that happens with these maps and it helps, um, market, if you will, all the wonderful things that are here. You have ice arenas and pools, you have a wonderful library, um, you have a planetarium, you have, uh, huge historical sites. There are many things to see in this city. So we approached this map trying to balance those two elements to both market and sell the wonderful things that are, that are in this place, but then also to simplify, uh, to make it easier for people to find where they are and where they need to go to. Um, this column over here on the side, uh, breaks up by land use, so where we are. So anything that's community, that would be the library, the senior gardens, the, um, the municipal plaza, um, corporate, uh, business uses, uh, historic sites, municipal uses, anything that's recreational, anything that's retail. And then we do include the Southfield Transportation Center because we did talk a lot about visiting students to LTU who may arrive by bus and we try and make their way down, um, trying to navigate this area here. Uh, the same information is organized down here in this panel. So we had a large area here for the municipal district. Lawrence Tech has their own district here. So to make this understandable, we took the area in the middle and divided it into four so that we would have categories and then all of our numbers here run in a local order so that you can find where you're trying to go to.
If I could jump in, the first of, we hope, hopefully, maybe a half a dozen kiosks that will be located throughout the district will be here. The second one logically may be on the campus of Lawrence Tech. We have the same wayfinding overall map, but then on Lawrence Tech's panel, they would have a blow-up of their campus design as well. It could, we're working with M.D.O.T., we have one located at the Transportation Center where Greyhound is serviced. Uh, there possibly could be one at the town center for, for people at the west end or other office, uh, work, employees coming and visiting that site. So these will be located in strategic areas with the same overall concept plant and then at each specific sub-area, then we'll go to the next one.
So, uh, because we're blown up here, we did use Lawrence Tech's current mapping on their website, which is a very nice isometric view of their campus. You can get a feel for the shape of the business buildings. Um, in the city, we do have very iconic buildings, um, the gold towers, each have their own shape. So, um, using that as our, our graphic design benchmark that we wanted to be at least that nice, if not nicer, um, we took your buildings from Zane and put them three-dimensionally so we gain an isometric map of that. So your, um, library has some very iconic shapes to it. So as you're standing here and you see the library, it'll be very easy for you to make cognitive maps in your head before you actually experience what else is here. This perspective also allowed us to pull in sort of the niceness of the golf course, which is a wonderful attribute to have in the city and allows us, um, the possibility of adding record trails throughout the highlight colors here. Um, our building number is here, matched up with what's currently online. Everything that is in each building that is, um, publicly facing, so what the public would be looking for in these buildings is what's in here. Um, our bike path is noted all the way down, which matches the bike path on this map, but the other map, yep, on that map, which also matches the symbol on the sign will be the other part of the system.
If I could add, as Angela mentioned, that if this is adopted by the city, uh, the same design is to upload it to all of our websites. Uh, I could easily see this blow-up map being installed on the wall at the ice arena for wayfinding. Smaller versions could be put in the lobby of the library, city hall and other departments. Uh, I, I say, uh, anecdotally, I think I get stopped at least twice a day in the parking lot where people are trying to find out where the course facility is or how do I get to the ice arena, where's, how do I get to the library? I think even though this is designed for pedestrian orientation, it could be built on for a larger, particular wayfinding system. Do you want to just touch on the interpretive panels?
Sure, very quickly, um, Carrie did a very good job covering that. Um, the whole idea is this book that you opened, the history book of Southfield, um, this one of course about Mary Thompson Farm, the history of the farm itself and the building itself and the families that inhabited that, uh, the Irwins who were there before, it's actually more Darla's book than my book, but I'll try, I thought it was a good student. Um, what, what I found very interesting about Mary Thompson was just her lineage here. So we tried to capture that and insight, how far back her family ties went. Um, and their story of David Stewart's story, how he came here with, as an older person, with, with full grown adult children, interesting. So we have that here, a little bit about Miss Mary herself, um, what she did and then how she was specifically managed to, to donate generously her land. Um, but again, QR code, we did a photo shoot through the house and then have donated those photos back to the Historical Society. So when you scan this code, you'll be able to flip through more. And then in these photos, they're stored behind each one. For example, um, this was from a previous, an Irwin carriage, baby carriage, right?
Herdy.
Herdy, baby carriage. Uh, so there are elements in the house that can tell you even more about not just this one person with the family who were there before. So there are elements in the house that can tell you even more about not just this one person with the family who were there before. And then this panel, this Darla's book is where you should be sitting, but how unique and how wonderful it is that you have captured this story, that you have, you have the conductors, you have the staff, you have the freedom seekers, and you have stories of all of this very well documented, so that's what this panel is telling you all about. And these are very long stories too, so we do have the two relevant pictures there with this in such to kind of explain some of the documentation that we have of that story, but then in the QR code, if you, any part device can scan that, and we can read further about how these elements come together.
And this has all been designed, hopefully with your blessing, to be integrated smoothly into the panels themselves to be installed before the official coverage of Evergreen Road. And it will set the template for future installation throughout the district or the city.
All right, council, are there any questions? Mr. Mandelbaum.
How easy is it to make changes? It's really just like a hard piece of plastic that goes along.
I'll let Angela mention that, but we did design it so cabinets, actually are a glass cabinet with a key to open up. These can be easily reconnected and installed. With the growth of development in the district, maybe once or twice, every one to two years, we might update the overall district map. But I'll let you talk about the material that we're proposing and how cost effective it is. The labor, the intensive labor is getting all the design elements in the template built first, and then it's much easier to add the layers of redevelopment. But go ahead and talk about the specifics of the design, the materials.
So our technology has progressed quite some time now before we would have to print on a piece of paper and load that into, maybe pin it to a corkboard. We're well beyond that now, we can print directly to substrates, we can print directly to metals, to standard PVC plastics, to plethora of materials up to four inches thick. So turnaround time to actually produce are only 24 hours, and they are very, very cost effective. I did some work out at Carpenter Lake, and I know some of the concerns are about constant changes and about vandalism, and then the way you kind of handle that is, well, if someone really wants to destroy this, they're going to find a way to destroy it. So do you put the money into something more expensive that's harder to destroy, or do you save your money a little bit and make it easier in place when you know that it would be reflected with changes as well? So the material that we're using here, I believe, is one quarter inch standard PVC, the number is exactly, I'm about to stop, but it was in that bit.
And then for the map, you're going to be, each separate map is going to have the overall city center district, and then the map of wherever you're located.
Yeah, the hope is that we've got it broken down into about five quadrants, that each of the quadrants would have their own kiosk. Each kiosk is three sided, and so one of the panels will be designated for the overall wayfinding through the entire district. Then one would be regulated just for the campus it's expanded to. And then the third panel, as I said, could be used to list programming, could be used to do additional interpretive panels, or it could be used for any other gamut that the city will use, you know, appropriate. So they're all designed to be flexible, they're all designed to work with each other, but they can be custom made and unique from the perspective that you're looking at them. And we only, at this point, as part of Evergreen Road, we have one kiosk and two interpretive panels. It is the hope that the city center would help fund the installation of additional kiosks. And as I said, it's likely that Lawrence Tech's campus would be the house of the second kiosk, and I'm also working with M.DOT at the Transportation Center probably to have the third kiosk located there. And then later on, these are about fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars for the actual manufacturing of the kiosk itself. We've already laid out a number of funds for the design development, and then there'll be a couple thousand dollars in production costs to actually fabricate these and install.
Because bubble kiosks, you're picking out bubble kiosks.
So about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per major site. The other ones are probably in that twenty five hundred to five thousand dollar range.
Yeah, on the map, is there going to be like a you are here thing?
On the municipal site, we do, because we know the kiosk is going to be located, it is not currently shown on the master map, I believe it's the same, it should be in the same spot, I think we might.
Yeah, it'll be located right here.
Right, and we have that layer turned off because we have the master map that would be on all kiosks, and then we have a layer specific to that.
Yeah, so in essence, each one would have its own you are here location.
Because that, for someone that's not familiar, that's a good way to orient themselves in which direction to go.
Yeah, if I could, and as designers, we like, always, designers like to see north all the time, but Angela convinced me that because you're having somebody who's trying to orient themselves, you want to orient the map towards the direction they're looking at. And so that's why that is all kept here, to north this, that way, so.
Another question is, I know that what you showed was just a concept, we spent probably more than, more time than we really need to be arguing over what's the design, the signs are going to take place, or are going to be, this is going to fall into that same.
Yeah, this actually, these are from what you approved on December 13th, 2013.
Okay, so.
Right out of the book, because in essence, this is part of M.DOT's installation. What we, what the city center helped fund is the design of what is put in there, but the fabrication and installation has already been bid out and is part of the M.DOT job, so there's no additional funds other than coming up with the design. And we're basically, with your approval, turning over the design to the signed fabricator who's going to install as part of the M.DOT job, in this particular case. Then we can take those, that M.DOT spec, and then go out and replicate it throughout the rest of the district through working with Lawrence Tech or the other suburbs.
Okay, the other question I have is, what department is going to be responsible for keeping these updated, figuring out what new needs to be put in, once Mary Thompson's Farm gets red a hundred thousand times?
I think the logical is community relations, they've been part of the steering group and stuff, and of how this gets put together. We had a lot of significant input from Parks and Recreation to make sure that their buildings are identified properly, we benefited from other agencies. The city center has been kind of the facilitator to help provide the extra funding and technical expertise, but I would say that at least the first set would go through community relations as the parent, you know, reviewer of content and so forth. And Michael has been part and parcel to the development of these panels.
Do you agree with that, Fred?
I think conceptually it works, but there may be some fine tuning, you know, for example, one of the boards will be Parks and Rec. Might have Parks and Rec PR staff works with community relations, but there'll be some coordination that needs to be put on. I think that's feasible. I think we might also put a, it's a kind of disclaimer that we only change the map out quarterly or something, because there's a good amount of turnover in some of these businesses.
Yeah, and also there's an expense involved with doing this.
But I do think they've done a good job in keeping this, if I'm correct, we can actually produce a sin house in GIS.
Yeah, all the files can be turned over to the city.
Right.
It'll be, it can be incorporated, we've worked with GIS closely on the content, and it's a whole, working with business developments and all the departments, that if this gets adopted, then all of the webpages and all the digital graphs will all have a unified message. And then I, again, I think that it makes sense, whether you, Fred, you get the flat screens in some of the departments that run, or we actually produce some of these that can be wall mounted, and as I said, the ice arena and the pool seems like a logical place to have an orientation. And I've often said, you have many parents and first time visitors that drop off their kids for a two hour ice hockey practice. It's not long enough to go home and come back, but it's long enough where they might not want to sit there, and they want to go out and explore. And we want them to be able to find our pathways, we want them to come and go get a cup of coffee, or a lot, you know, ice creams or something like that. And by having this available front and center, we're going to encourage more people getting out of the district and spending their money or even just walking.
Yeah, I can also imagine that whoever's in charge of this has to have thought of a succession plan, if you will. Mary Thompson's Farm is there now, what are we going to do next, and next, and next, so that there's continuity, and it stays fresh, otherwise, after a while, it just turns into another nuisance.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, that has to be planned, it can't be, at the last minute, can't do a real ten on those signs.
Right, I think one of the nice things is we can try to find a balance between the historical and the boundary signs that you often read, and the QR code, which you can get further information, and that can be updated in real time. So if this Historical Society finds a new tidbit about each one of these sites, it'll, it could get redirected to their website, it could get redirected to the library, it could get redirected, I think you had to secure the images from.
Yes, we did, Massachusetts Historical Society.
They actually own the rights to the photo of one of the reverends that we purchased, and so there's a whole gamut of, it's really a gateway into a lot of other resources.
I can also imagine that at some point in time, have, had like a little quiz, or interesting things that you don't know about the city of Southfield, or things that happened in the city of Southfield. For instance, if I'm, my memory serves me right, Denso invented that QR code, and then made it public property, so that, I don't know that, how many people really know that, so.
I think you and I could have an hour long conversation after this meeting, because Darla knows I had some crazy concepts when I first came up here, like, you should see a three dimensional book, and we could turn the page, and we can put it out the berg, and I think that we could have a very long conversation about. You have some wonderful history here, and it's great to have it showcased. I did want to make one comment about how often things may be changed, if we can go to the district map. We identified fifty eight items, fifty eight places that could be on this map, and this list of fifty eight can very easily be two hundred. So what we proposed to get to this point was some filtering, so rather than list, for example, every single in line tenant, which you do have very high turnover thing, it's listed by property name, but that's also why this is connected with a QR code, so if you do want to know where the Einstein bagels, where can I get copy of that kind of thing, you can swipe that code and you can find the tenants. And that is, as Terry was saying, instantly updatable and easily managed.
Oh, well, good to be encroaching with the Southfield spot.
The answer is yes, and what we haven't done in the Southfield spot is turn on that, I'm going to turn that here, the little, the tracking thing, and you could, because we actually, part of that is for the campus, but this map could serve as that map. And then if we turn on electronic thing, you could get the ping, you are here, and it could guide you to, if you're in the roundabout trying to find the ice arena, it could literally tell you how to get there. And I'm sorry, I'm drawing blank on what the thing's called. It's like a GIS, but it's a radio frequency, and if you recall, that was the piece we backed off on.
Fred, is it RFID?
I think it's Wi-Fi.
Okay, you think it's Wi-Fi?
Beacon.
Beacon.
Beacon, that's what it was.
It was, it was, the beacon, the beacon, thank you. We backed off on the beacon, because part of what we were talking about when we did that was putting beacons throughout the city center and other parts of the city that would ping, and you could ping fun facts, you are here, ping special at Fridays, you know, jazz concert, you know.
Group party.
Yeah, we still got to have the discussion about the radio frequency and the beacon, that was.
Okay, Mr. Mandelbaum, is the QR code going to be easily scanned through the glass to pay them?
Yes, it's in, I don't believe that glass is actually glass, it's a non, non glare, I think.
All right, thank you, okay, thank you. Okay, on the next slide on my agenda, the interpretive panel, you've almost got a shot ready to open.
And it's just a pull up of a public.
Yeah, because you're going to make that. This can be one second.
Matt Gibbs, Director of Government Development, Matt Goff is here, Stevens.
It's close enough, you guys have been working so hard. Good evening, everyone, County President, Mr. Stevens, Councilman. Matthew Gibb, I'm one of Brooks Patterson's five deputy executives, so Mr. Dowell loves finance, Mr. Poisoner loves legal, and I get to run economic development, so I guess to talk to him. Appreciate you taking some time for us tonight. And as a former township trustee and township supervisor, after a lengthy legal career, I always appreciate the diligence and amount of work that folks end up running at municipalities, so I applaud you for that. It is the old man's work, and well earned the title that you have, and the work that you do. Just as a snapshot, as Shelley is finding my very great presentation, but if you don't find it out, just talk to Rick Shelley. On Thursday, Brooks will be presenting the budget to the Board of Commissioners at the county level. And we're submitting another balanced budget that is a three year line item rolling budget. Our budget is now balanced through the year 2020 on a line item basis. We've been able to exhaust all of our debt, all the legacy costs, all that's been financed through bond and then refinanced and paid off, and so the county's in pretty good shape. From an economic perspective, I have to thank Southfield, it's had such significant work in the last couple of years, the amount of companies that have been attracting and expanding here in Southfield has been remarkable, and it's too a lot of hard work. Tell of your good staff, we adore Mr. Screeman and Mr. Zorm, we kind of like him too, I guess. Clearly, the council and the leadership that you've shown, even again tonight, VR group is someone that I've met repeatedly, J.C.'s character, but I think he's going to be a good one for our region and certainly for our county. And we've talked quite heartily at things that we can do together to expand that project, and I think what you've done tonight is really kind of showing the direction that we love and see the county go, so it's good. So let me give you an outline of why I'm here, One Stop Ready. I'm here to invite you, plead with you a little bit that you'll join our program, but it's an interesting one tonight. You don't really have to do anything, you can show up if you want to show up, it doesn't cost you anything, and you don't have to listen to us. So it's a funny, unique program, and that'll be here. About three years ago, this is my flicker here, Shelley, I'll accept your name still, that's okay. About three years ago, you know, Brooks asked me, for twenty years or so as an attorney, I represented a lot of developers throughout Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky. And then I got elected as a trustee, and I realized that, well, we can apply some of those tactics that I used for so many years to our own work, and then as township supervisor, apply some more. And Brooks said, well, you know, you should try to, you know, adopt some of that stuff in communities in the counties, they really appreciate learning some of those insider tools. And so the first year, we started a pilot program, and we called it One Stop Ready, and I started to go around and telling communities what they should do, and that lasted all about thirty six seconds. And we quickly realized that we needed to have a program where we didn't tell you to do anything, that we just suggested some of the things from our peers that are out there, that really worked. And so we created a program, what's the One Stop Ready program? And we're not experts in slides and things, we're more experts in economic development, so bear with me in some things, so I'll talk through it. What One Stop Ready is, really is this first phrase, a community focused economic development program built upon self evaluation, information sharing, and outstanding customer service. Those are things Southfield already has, which is why you're a tremendous candidate for us to bring into what we call our academy class this year. What we do with our partners is we capitalize on your strength and the mind process and your vision. What this really means is what's kind of overlapped here, down here. We got together with our five communities three years ago. Rochester was one of the communities, Lion Township was one of the communities. We asked one, at least Lake Waterford, and Carl Solon, who is the township supervisor, and said, Matt, I'm. said, Matt, I'm not going to have you come in and tell us what we're doing wrong. And I'm like, well, it's not what it's about, Carl, but they decided not to participate. But that was a learning lesson for us as well. And we started to refine, what do investors, what do check writers want to know? Where are they going? Why are they choosing, why are they choosing your community? I went to Oxford, a little Oxford if you travel, that's up by where I live, actually. I live in Lake Orion. And I asked them, I said, well, why do people choose Oxford? And they said, well, because we have a really cute downtown. And then when Waterford joined the program the next year, I asked Waterford, why do they choose Waterford? Why is somebody building a house there? Why is somebody building a new subway shop? Or why is somebody building a factory? And they said, well, because we're the best neighborhood in Oakland County. I said, well, there's some communities out there, Southfield amongst them, I bet might contend that a little bit. Just like Rochester might say, well, we're cuter downtown than Oxford. But, you know, why are people choosing you? It's about perception. It's about whether a business, an investor, someone wants a build a garage, whether they would come to your community because they know it is a cool place. It is a place that's welcoming. It's a place that has great neighborhoods and good neighbors, but also a place where if they want to build a garage on their house, it doesn't take them nine months to get the first permit. Or they build the garage and then they get held up for six months by some inspector that's just an old curmudgeon. Now, there's things and perceptions in your communities and all of our communities, the ones that I led too, that lead to different aspects and opportunities. We want to teach some certain things. The community at One-Stop Ready is committed to being very reliable, meaning when someone walks up to the counter that your staff is prepared, and if they're not prepared, they know how to get the answer. Even if, well, yeah, we do all that. Trust me, it's not a criticism. Nobody does it perfectly. When I went to Auburn Hills, and Auburn Hills is a great, great community for economic development, much like Southfield is. You look at Novi, you know, those areas, you know, that's where things are really growing, residentially in Lion Township, it's growing like crazy. Orion Township is growing like crazy. You look at, what are the traits of those communities? And we went through one of our academy classes, they asked Auburn, they told Auburn Hills, they said, well, Auburn Hills, you succeed because I-75 goes through you. Much like somebody say, well, Southfield succeeds because the lodge goes, goes through you. Well, that's not the case. The lodge goes through Detroit too. They're not leaps and bounds in those areas. And the lodge goes through Flint. They're not exactly running away with economic development opportunities. It takes an attitude. It takes reliability. People that know that they come to your community, much like the R group did tonight. Yeah, he came with trepidation, but he had that confidence that you were going to listen and you were going to be responsible. You're responsible, you take, make continuous improvement and you're resourceful. And so what we do in this program, and we have different attributes, we can, how you talk about your strengths and think about your strengths, but here's what I want to really get to. We have several participating communities. I'm going to show up my staff with you. This is the new ones. So in 2015, these are the new communities, Claussen, Groveland, Hazel Park, Keego, and Bloomton. We have said no to about seven other communities in lieu of coming and asking you to be part of it. And the reason we want Southfield to be part of it is because the way we structure the program is, is it's learning from your peers. So again, we don't tell you to do anything. All we do is we create an environment. We have some program components of the program. And tonight is really the first component, if you choose to join. We ask you to have a resolution from this council. Now, the reason for that is, I'll give you an example. Royal Oak's in the program, they joined last year. So don't pick on me. You're going to call Royal Oak and say, Matt, let's pick on Royal Oak again. But they know I do this all the time. You know, they've got some staff people in Royal Oak that don't think that this is really worth their time and effort. But the council really likes it and some members of the planning commission really like it. And so part of the element is if, if the mayor and I sit down, the mayor says, yeah, let's get in this program, and Fred says, fine, we can do it. And it's just the two of them who say, we want to be in this program, then what weight does that carry? No offense, mayor. Doesn't carry much weight, right? But if the council says, you know what, we want to learn, we want to improve ourselves, even if there's something out there peers doing that we're doing, maybe we can do it a little bit better. So we ask you to pass a resolution and then we ask you to designate a liaison, somebody to work with us directly. And then we have these kind of posters, but not right away. And the poster's interesting, you'll see that in the presentation in a second. People say, why would you have to sign a poster, Matt? Well, because, you know, the community that I led, I had three or four people on my planning commission and zoning board that would have rather had me drive off a cliff than actually do something positive for the community just because of that issue. Fred, we have people in communities like that, right? As a leader, I encountered some of that. And so I said, we need to have everybody sign a poster that says we're part of the One-Stop Ready so that at least one time you can look that person in the eye and say, listen, two years ago, you signed a poster, Matt, and we're going to try to do this stuff. There is some community building that's around it. But this is the nuts and bolts of it, the continuous improvement. We have four things that we really focus on. Our academies, best practices, and I know you've heard the term best practices before in the redevelopment ready initiative that states, and we're completely different. We don't ask you to do anything. You have to pay consultants, we want them to be there. This is more about peer-to-peer sharing. It's about what are the best ideas out there that you might adopt as your own? And what's the management structure? What is the council's expectation, Shelley, other people in your system? So the resolution, we have a sample, we designate a liaison. The liaison really has a hard job because you've got to know a lot of stuff, but the most important thing is you have to know our phone number, how we can help most involved. You know, here's the poster, we create a poster for you. It's all pretty cool. So these slides are horrible. Don't ever do these slides, I'm going to talk to my staff about it. The One-Stop Ready academies. So we have three academies. Now, you'll notice that the date is coming up rather quickly, which is why I'm here to beg and plead and there's some rule that I have to ask for, and Shelley will help me out with. The academy sessions are very interesting for us. I don't know, do we have any pictures of them? No. So the One-Stop Ready academies, a couple of people from Southfield has been, been to them before. They're actually a lot of fun. It's, it's leaders like yourself. So the communities that you'll have with you, Hazel Park, Claussen, Groveland Township, they're different types of groups, which means they're different type of leaders. Groveland Township has development issues just like Southfield has and questions about that, but they're a tiny little rural township in Oakland County. They're going to learn from Southfield about how you deal with certain things, about how you deal with new opportunities they've never heard of. You're going to learn from them about how to deal with curmudgeons and people that have been there for sixty years and they want to see things just the right way. And you're going to learn ideas and we facilitate that. And so you come to three academy sessions and you learn a lot about what's going on. The first one is economic context, what vision really means and management structure. Where are we at, man? You know, where is the economic context? You got Denso expanding and VR groups coming, but what is really the economic context? Where are we at from our perspective, from our three-year rolling budget? What is about now, say, the economy is here in Oakland County? What does it mean for Southfield? What does it mean for his product? Talking about vision, again, getting you thinking about perception and management structure. It's so important to have management structure. If you have a community where the council believes that we should be doing one thing and your staff believes you should be doing something else, and it's a very difficult community to continue to grow. And so Southfield doesn't have those issues, but if you're learning about how other communities are making sure that their structure is good, it's just so beneficial. The investor's perspective, this is a very, very interesting one. Now, at these academy sessions, you might say, well, Matt, who goes? We average about a hundred and twenty people in every session. Planning commissioners, board members, council people, mayors, township supervisors, lion of staff people, building inspectors, not everybody. Some communities bring seventy percent of the people and some communities bring ten. That's why I say, you don't have to come, we kind of hope you come. And so you come. This is a very fun one. What is the investor's perspective of how good you are? Not how good you are as like a cool community, but how good you are at making them money. And that seems a little coarse, but as Shelley and some of the others know, that the investor's perspective is very important. Rochester Hills, ten years ago, was one of the most difficult communities to do economic development in Oakland County. Not one of the best, but if you talk to a developer that does a lot of projects there in ten years, they still believe in the worst. What is the perspective out there? Now, you'd be interested. I'm going to invite all you to come, I'm really hoping you'll be part of the program. When you come to that, leaders of these communities come in and think it's going to be a grudge match between those curmudgeon old developers and, you know, they're just going to complain about us. It's not. It is so fun, it's so interactive to get a perspective from the outside world. Not at this company where things are very formal, but a very, very informal dialogue of what is their perspective? What are the issues they face? What is your role in their whole process? An international company might take three years before they're before you. What is that process? What's the critical points of it? So very cool. Implementation of best practices. Now, we talk about different best practices than anybody else because, again, I'm not here to rewrite your master plan. I don't care what your ordinance book says. I don't care what your parking regulations are. I really don't care. That's all for you to decide. All I care about is you get thinking about five very, very important things in economic development that we want all of our communities in Oakland County to be thinking. That you have pre-application meetings. Now, we, we kind of care how you run them, but not really. We just want you to have an idea that this is how communities like Auburn Hills are running them, or Troy is running them, or Orion, where I was, is running them, so that you get a sense of, well, wait a minute now, there's some things there that are really cool that we could adopt. Internet accessibility, you're really good at this, so you don't have too much to worry about. We still have communities in Oakland County that they really expect a company out of Japan to fly here to get the ordinance book because the ordinance book isn't online. And I always get with them, I'm like, how are you ever going to compete unless you have complete internet accessibility? And we just give you other tools. What are they doing in Grand Rapids? You know, the permitting turnaround in Grand Rapids right now is less than forty-eight hours for a building permit and it's all done online. Last year, they did, got close to seventeen thousand building permits in the city of Grand Rapids. Over ten thousand, less than forty-eight hours, all online, never saw a person. So, I mean, there's things that you could look at, different types of tools. We don't care if you adopt them, but we hope that you listen to them. Proactive project tracking, it's so important. We have people that use BSNA software in Oakland County communities and they say, well, we track our projects because we put it in the building permit system and we know it's there. And what we mean is, is what they're doing in places like Denver, Colorado, where they assign a liaison person that calls the people, no matter what they're building, building a house, building a garage, building a factory, building an R&amp;D center, and they annoy them in project tracking. If you don't get to us by Tuesday, you'll miss the deadline for the meeting. This all gets down to what we talk about throughout the whole program, is time is the incentive. If you want to get a company here, Shelley knows this, and they say, we've got to be open and operational by March first, you've got to figure out how to do that. Or what if they say, here it is July, what if they say, we've got to be operational October first? There's ways you can do that and it's all about being proactive in the way you work projects. Business and community input. You know, Brooks, when he first got elected, started the business roundtable. We've adopted eighty percent of the recommendations from the business roundtable. If you're not listening to your business and your community, them telling you what's wrong, then your community, that's in a little bit of strife, right? You know, so you don't have to do what they say, that's why you don't have to do what I say, but you have to listen. And you, and we try to teach from your peers, not us, here's what they're doing in other communities. Some have roundtables, some have bi-monthly coffee meetings, some have rely on the chamber. We just want you to listen, here's what all your peers in these really cool, dynamic communities are doing. Last one is clear and efficient permitting process. This is it. This is all we ask you to think about. Notice how we say, we don't know how to do it. We just want you to be focusing on, these five elements are the most significant elements in economic development for a long-term sustained community. And because you're within the county, we want to help you get to that, look, thinking about twenty-thirty, twenty-four, those types of things. We created a guidebook, which will show you the thing about project tracking. We also do some other things for you. We have a community showcased at the end of the year where we come in, we act, we bring in every developer we know, and trust me, we know a lot. Last year, we had, we got about thirty developers come into the showcase. This year, we're planning on inviting more than a hundred, that would include site selectors and others. We want our One-Stop Ready communities to come in and kind of highlight, this is what we do, this is how we're cool, this is what we're struggling with, and then we help you and market yourself and give you advantages. The liaisons meet and we have forums and it's pretty cool. So this is the program. Thank you, questions and answers. So here's, here's the deal. We're starting very quickly, which I apologize for. I would have came to see you in April, but we're up to a thousand and forty-one multinational corporations from forty-nine countries and I spent most of April out of the country. So I apologize for that. And then I was kind, you know, the mayor was kind enough to give me some time. I wanted to talk to him just about, you know, is this worth bringing down to your community? And he gave me enough of a good, positive feedback, at least coming this morning. And so I apologize, it's a little bit late in the game. But the reason Southfield is important to us is because you're just such a giant economic development entity right now. You've got so much going on, the wave-finding stuff that you're doing now, the work that your staff is doing, the communities that you're partnering with, like Hazel Park and Claussen, they need to be hearing from you and you need to be hearing from them. And so you're a direct invite. So we've had other communities that said, can we do this this year? And I said, no, I need to hear from Southfield first because it's important to create the mix of what we do in these academy sessions. And so I'll shut up, I can answer any questions about it. It's, it's, we now have, if you join, we'll have twenty communities in the One-Stop Ready program. This will be the third year of this. So you'll be joining communities like Wicksum and Auburn Hills and Waterford Township and Lion Township and Orion Township and Independence Township. So kind of a broad range. Those communities now use this as a marketing tool. Auburn Hills once had, well, you know, we do a lot of this stuff and then the mayor spoke up and said, but we can always learn something more, which was cool. But then they asked me, they said, well, if we don't do this, is it going to hurt us? It doesn't hurt you. It really doesn't hurt you. The goal that I have on behalf of the county for economic development is I want to be able to tell anybody around the world that when they come to Oakland County, they have a commonality of opportunity for platform, that they're going to have an opportunity to meet with excellent staff before the project gets started, that they can have reliance and expectation of what they, when they come to our county. Nobody's doing this in our neighboring counties. I love them all, they're great, rainy and cold. We are setting ourselves above the bar of readiness and economic opportunities. And this program is an advocate of the academy. So there's my pitch. If you're interested, then you would pass the resolution, which I think we forwarded along before.
Right.
And I can answer questions?
It's not in your packet though.
Where is that meeting on July twenty-second?
The first one will be at the county building, up in our conference room, so right at the executive office building, so straight up telegraphed it. And then I think we're going to try to bounce some around and it wouldn't surprise me very much if we asked you to host the third one on management structures so that some of our communities and the more Southfield communities don't have to go all the way up to the county complex, because you've got room for us. So you can find room for us. But the first one on July twenty-second is up at our, at our office. And, and, you know, if you're thinking, well, this is kind of, kind of silly, I'm a pretty bold facilitator, so I will call on you. We have clickers and answer questions and we get your peers talking and about halfway through these last couple of hours, you know, we feed you at the beginning and then the last couple of hours, you think, ah, I've sat there for two hours. People talk in the parking lot from ten o'clock at night. It is a way that you can connect with your peers on issues that are just practical things that you wouldn't really believe. that you wouldn't really believe. And we've been so excited the way this program has progressed. So I'm talking so much because I get excited, like, it's been a late night for you, so...
Okay, what time does that mean, you on the phone? And that's for elected official staff?
It's, it's for anybody in your structure. So council, planning commission, ZBA staff.
Okay.
Hi, my name, what's the time?
And it's, the food starts at six there, and then the program starts at six-thirty. And people eat while we're talking.
Is there a cost associated for Chinese?
You got to pay for your own gas to get up there?
No.
No, there's no cost. The cost, the cost is really is, you know, it is, is up to you. Most of your consultant staff are in house, you know, some of our townships say, "Well, we want our planner and our engineer to be there," and I say, "Well, go for it, come for free." I mean, it, you know, it's a way for you to engage, but there's no cost.
There's no cost.
There's no cost. You don't have to adopt anything, you don't have to say, "Be successful in this program, we've got to do something."
Okay.
Your success is your involvement.
Any other questions?
I'm just free. How different is this than some of the things that SEMCOG does?
Well, it's a little bit more customer service-based. And what I mean by that is, the, the facilitation of the ideas of those best practices are less guided in nuts and bolts of it, and more guided in the customer service. I'll give you an example. So the supervisor of Highland Township, you joined last time, he's excellent, he's a very, very honest man, and I'm quite surprised his desk will talk to me. Every time he comes, he says, "Yeah, the other day, we had somebody walk in, and those ladies were so mean to him, and I should have fired somebody." And you facilitate a conversation about what is the best customer service methodology. So SEMCOG doesn't get involved in some of that personal, that's why we have a session on the perspective from the investor, is it's important to hear that, you know, they don't mind certain things. People think, "Oh, they hate the fees," or "They hate the reviews," but they don't mind that kind of stuff. So we try to gear this program more towards implementing these tactics, but from a customer service basis. And so it's similar, overlaps, to some of the work that you've done in the redevelopment-ready program that the state took over from the Suburbs Alliance, that we don't get into that nuts and bolts, but we talk to you how, how to facilitate that into a customer service model for staff and public, because that's how it's going to work.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that concerns me a little bit is, you know, government is good at coming up with different kind of programs, but when you step back and look at it from a distance, they're, they're not the same, but there's enough similarities that you may end up going to two meetings and talk about eighty percent of the same stuff. And, you know, I want to make sure that, I want to feel comfortable that, not only make sure, I want to feel comfortable that if I come to a meeting, it's not one that I just went to two days ago.
I can, um, wholeheartedly assure you, it won't be like you go to today. And that's based on, you know, twenty years of experience as, as legal counsel doing this, and then by two and a half years as a supervisor, where we turned to Orient Township out of town. And the, the things that you'll go through are far different, the stories that you'll go through are far different. And, and in all candor to my, my colleagues that do some of this work, we're, we're less about the, the nuts and bolts of what a planning seminar was, the planning commission meeting, and more about, here's how you get to your vision, master plan, VDMs kind of thing, how you can respect your master plan to get to that court down, which is, again, you know, Southfield had that attitude. And so that sense is different, and I think you'll be surprised that when we pull out some of those responses from your peers, that they won't be things that you've heard. And I only do that just from the security of, we've done this now for a couple of years in the communities, and they really do go out into the parking lot, and they're just sharing information, which I don't see happening after Centa, I mean, I love Centa, but it's, it's, it is a different focus in the way that we approach it.
You know, is it, is it interactive to the point where the subject is brought up and you break up into subgroups, and how does it, how does it function?
It's a collaborative discussion within the room. So our academy sessions, they're in the main conference room up at the executive building. They're collaborative in the sense that, at first, I have to start drawing out some conversation, but you know, a hundred people in a room, everybody's around roundtables, I try to mix people up at first, so you're sitting by, not just the people that you work with every day. And then it's, it's a sense that we start to ask questions. When you talk about perception, we put a little clicker up there, and we'll talk about when somebody walks into your building department, what's their first impression? And, and we put up some very goofy pictures, but some people answer that honestly, I find those people, those people. And the ones that, you know, Pontiac answered honestly, who looked like there was nobody there. They said, "Well, there is nobody there, everybody's gone in Pontiac, I haven't been." But if that facilitated well, how do you deal with that? And able to create discussions. So we keep it as a big group, that way everybody can hear what everybody else is thinking and all that. And by the time you get through the three sessions, everybody really has an engagement to it. And, you know, in that sense, it's, it's a little bit, and I do my best to try to draw out very candorous conversation, and it's good.
Mr. Zellman? Man, I just want to ask you, you said, the building department, so this is an examination, review of planning, building, engineering, the full interface, including fire, all the department? Because I, I think a lot of times when, when you start talking about, some of us are thinking the planning process, and redevelopment-ready was primarily a focus on the planning process. Now this is looking at issuance of building permits, issuance of engineering permits, as well as fire safety permits, and so this is a little bit more comprehensive, and it's a broad...
I'll give you one, one quick start, if you choose to be in it, you come in here to get, I apologize, but when I was supervising Orient Township, when we put together our pre- apps, I required attorney, engineer, planner, and fire chief to be at every pre-app meeting. After the third one, where my fire chief sat there with his orange cross, I yanked him out of the room, and I said, "If you don't go back in there, I know you have to move the fire act, I've done development work for twenty years, I know you have to move the fire act. So can you tell them that?" He said, "I'm not going to tell them that." I took it to the next board meeting, and fired the guy after thirty-two years. And, and we didn't fire him, but that's the type of stuff that you're going to hear about, the importance of management structure, top to bottom. If you have a building inspector that is doing their own thing, that is against the direction that the council sets, then you've got a problem. We don't get in your face about that, but you hear from your peers those types of things, that's what we're talking about. It's customer service, it's about what's your expectation as elected leaders of what your staff are doing, not from a day-to-day, but from a customer service. How are they representing your city so that your perception is that you are a city that is dynamic and ready for opportunities? Not that you're approving projects, but that you're...
And if I may, the council, I, I like this, and the more elected officials who take part of it, I'm in favor of. The exercise we've been going through in the building department in the last year has been examination of the building department, but there's clearly an interface with planning, fire, as well as the engineering. And there were things, you know, last March, you, we rehauled our ordinance for dealing with sanitary to be more aligned with the county. So we have more, if you recall, our base rate was three times higher than the county, so we came in line. In the next, most likely, August, we'll be presenting a new fee schedule that looks at this. The other thing that helps us out is our, our internal permitting system is viewed only internally, and we've started making stages, steps, so that the outside can see what's happening in our permitting system, where it's more real-time. I myself have been out to Novi and looked at what they've done, we, but we're hitting the point, in our, in our process, we're going to be not just building, planning, engineering, and the building department, where IT needs to come in, and I want to need greater coordination of participation, as well as even the city clerk's office, who's charged for record retention. And some of this ties directly to even our FOIA's, and ninety-five percent of our FOIA's are building-related. And I think my, our, our project consultant down the building department, I think, has met with five of the seven council people, and I think we've got two more meetings to do, or one more meeting to go through. But we're outlining a structure and a way to pay for that and to put that technology in place. And I, I think the global on this could be a good compass. And I'm going to throw it back at Matt, because my criticism in Oakland County is the Water Resource Commission permitting and the Healthcare Department permitting.
And we understand that, even if we, I totally agree with it.
So, and then on the, uh, water resource permitting, as I feel that first ring, the older communities are penalized with this hundred-year storm standard, and we're doing somersaults with our brownfield plans, and I'll use St. Bees. That site, six drains went directly into the county drain, no treatment, no backflow, and what we went through to get the Water Resource Commission to accept a hundred, a ten-year standard, dramatic improvement versus a hundred-year, but that would have decreased the tax yield. So you, we're going to, we're going to be there, and you're going to hear me, those two issues, the Health Department, and eventually, the Department of Agro Culture, with some of their permitting.
Sure. You know, and, and we're working at the state level, you know, not necessarily through the MADC, but through, you know, Senator Cole and Colbeck and some others, that want us to try to adopt this into administrative things at DQ, DNR, because it's the same thing. If we're going to come and, and preach, you know, we need to, to act ourselves, and the county will, we have our own issues as well.
And I'll use, we've got DIRR, Brownfield, PA 210, and site plan through in seventy-two days. The state permit, please, gone. Uh, how long did state permit take for DIRR? That was, everything came to complete halt, because we couldn't...
Waiting for the heat?
They were a hundred and fifty days? And that's the kind of thing where these, you know, there's what, what's in our control, and I know I need cause, what's happening with my permit? And the first thing I'll ask is, building, planning, and even on our end, and I'm going to use this as a segue, we're pushing the planning and the engineering to start using BSNA in Southfield, because only our building department. We've got, you know, as we've gone through this exercise, there's a prescription list of things we have to do, and fire department hasn't been using BSNA.
We use BSNA.
You've been using it partially, and then there's the other piece tied to the cash receiving function, where we're still writing some handwritten receipts, and we're trying to get these all to tie together, so...
As a, as a reflection in our academy sessions, this kind of conversation will happen, but then all of a sudden, you'll have Gary Wall from Wadford chime in and say, "Oh, we got to talk after, because I did it this way." And then it, it really is dynamic what happens, because it's your peers. And I know if we stand up here and try to tell you what to do, you won't come, it would be useless, but if Gary Wall tells you that this is how they tried and failed, it tries...
I've learned a lot on my site tours with Wade Trend, just going out loud, nobody, uh, quick, quick, boom, all accounted for, all the cost accounting's done.
Council, do we want to take a consensus to move forward? Mr. Cruz, Mr. Mandevan, Mr. Fraser?
Yep.
Mr. Seymour?
I mean, I'm moving forward.
Moving forward to act on a real team that come in fire for one side.
What is the number?
Nothing. These are, don't cost anything? Don't have to show up?
My office, my office will work with the clerk, make sure they're open when they are. I'll lasso probably folks from planning, engineering, business development, our building department to be there, I'll probably ask our IT people to be there, and possibly, so much of our finance group as well.
We really do. It's, it's, we clearly want a meeting of council. Maybe it's your structure.
Freebie. So we're getting a consensus here. Mr. Seymour?
Yes. And I say yes as well.
So let's move forward with the...
Well, we can move, right?
And if I may, ma'am?
Yes.
If we could formally put the resolution on the next meeting, and we'll have it adopted under...
Do you want to put it on Monday?
The twentieth is okay for timing wise?
Can I send a staff person to answer questions, in case something comes up?
It'll be on, we'll put it on date.
I'll be honest with you, if you can't do the resolution until another meeting, I just want to make sure you start us coming.
We'll do it on the twentieth.
All right, perfect.
Do you have any questions? It's a matter of...
So there's really no, whatever you put into it, you kind of get out of it. Is there any follow-up after someone goes through these things?
We have, we have created a guidebook, some of you might be familiar with our Main Street program, so we've got nineteen of our communities, downtown communities in the Main Street program. So we modeled a little bit of, that's a self-evaluation process as well. So we created it, it's a trial and error, it'll probably change next year, but just kind of a self-evaluation guide. Our liaisons from our community are appointed to your community, so you'll have a direct point of communication with our office. But there are also intended to follow up to say, "Hey, let's sit down with the people who you have time, and let's just go through some of these things." You know, "Are you doing these things?" You know, "Have you followed up, have you met with your business?" It's a way of check and balance. But then we also have different events. So like throughout the year, I'll, I'll throw out a notice that says, for a meeting called Leaders and Lessons, where I don't want your staff and your planning commission, I want you, and I want the mayor, I want, you know, township supervisor that can come, where we talk more on a high level of what, what you're facing from this level, by leading your community. So you have opportunities to continually to engage with your peers. We're going to have a program this year that is bringing in people, anybody can come again, but only one-stop-ready communities, where we're going to be talking about the cause and effect of economic development when it comes to school budgeting, when it comes to those types of things. So you'll have these other opportunities that are out there. And then we're hopeful by next year that we want to have a thing where we kind of do self-awards almost, where we say, you know, "This is the best project we did this year, this is the best fix to our art that we did this year, and give a cause for everybody to come, but you share what you did, it's your success." And so we're hoping that the program builds on that. So really, it, it really is, the more you, more you put in, the more you get out. And like I said, we've had some communities that have put very little in, and they get very little out, and others that, they had thirty-five people at every session, and they won't leave you alone. So it's, it's cool, I mean, it's a good point. So I'm sorry, I'm taking up so much. How often do you meet?
Yeah, are there regular meetings, like, do you have regular monthly meetings or weekly meetings? Can come to or require to come to?
The, the three academy sessions, which are one in July, one in August, one in September, you'll get all the information, we'll make sure we get it in complete back on.
One day a week?
And, I'm sorry?
Is each one a one day?
It's, it's in the evening, so people that are working can make it...
How many days?
It's just one day. It lasts about three hours in total. And then the follow-up sessions from there that we have are the same type of thing. We don't want to make this a huge commitment for you. We don't want to make it so you've got to come every week, or you've got, all of a sudden, you're personally off time. Yeah, and so we, you know, we used to have even more, more opportunities, you know, we had five academies, shrunk it down to three academy sessions, because we just want to get you thinking in the direction that these communities are thinking, let you do your own thing, and then follow up with your work with your staff.
Are the academy, are the academy meetings like one meeting or several meetings?
There's three, three, three sessions.
Three sessions for each one?
No, there's one session in July on economic context, one in August on investors' perspective, and one in September on, on best practices on that.
All right, we have a consensus from council, it'll come on Monday's meeting, and we'll have a letter for you. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. All right, I took up so much time. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, and that is, the library, and this is a boost of the upgrade to the library's internal technological network.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
When I, when I say library, most of you probably think books, but the library's brand is no longer books. The library's brand is knowledge, the library's brand is information, and one of the major parts of that is our technological infrastructure. And right now, we're at the end of life on many parts of that infrastructure, including our, our wired and wireless switches are at the end of life, our UPS, which is the uninterrupted power supplies, are, are at the end of life, and it's time for us to upgrade our, our computer system, which is a, a, really, well, as you can see from the cost, it's, it's a large piece of what we do. So we are, we are asking to be able to work with CDWG to provide a, a network that would include a variety of, of parts, as well as some training and things like that, and we would like to ask you to approve it. Short and sweet.
Any questions, council?
Chris?
Alison, I was reading through this. Yes. That said, that the construction project in two thousand and three was the last time it was installed, and now it's obsolete, that...
Well, we've, we've, we've improved parts along the way, but yeah, this is the first time we've actually redone the whole thing. So yeah, it's, it's a dozen years old now.
Two thousand, it was obsolete a long time ago.
Yeah. Well, we believe in stretching things, I mean, we've got public computers that probably, if you had them at home, you'd think, a lot of, but we, we take parts out of old ones, we, you know, we, we make everything last as long as we possibly can.
And that was just the point I just wanted to make, and I don't know, we, we give, at OCT, one thing we did there with our technology was actually put everything on replacement cycles, where we actually transitioned it out before it was obsolete, while it still had some value, and so we, you know, we finally, we ended up spending more money the longer you tried to kind of hatch things up over time. I was just wondering if we could, if that was something that we looked at and...
Generally, we, yeah, generally, we would have replaced it sooner, but because of the financial problems that we've been having, we just made it stretch. So, and we're seeing that light at the end of the tunnel, and we're thinking, now's the time, let's do this. And, and we do have, I'm not sure how we're going to do this going forward, and I, I'm going to talk with Fred and, and the financial group, or financial members of the, of the city, because in the past, we've had equipment revolving funds, which were like a sinking fund, where we would put money into it in preparation. And we were told a few years ago, before Mr. Zorn took over, that there would be no more sinking funds, that once you used up what you had, it's gone. We need to figure out how, how do we do that, so that we set aside a little bit at a time. We also know that we're going to have some things like carpet replacement, roof replacement, you know, the building's getting older. So that is indeed on our horizon.
You've spoken in the past that the library did a study to figure out how to optimize space, you know, has this been taken into consideration?
This was not part of their overall purview, they did not look at IT. I got a preliminary report Friday, read it over the weekend, I was going to, to, he was going to try and call me today, because he wants to make some, you know, talk about some parts. I don't have any of the exhibits that he's going to be presenting also, but we're getting pretty close to having that, and it, this was not a piece of that. His, his view is more, or the, the consultant that we hired was more looking at personnel and, and the actual structures of the building. One of the things that he has, he has, I want to talk to him more about, but it's an idea that I actually had too, was what if we were to take all the computers and put them on one floor, all the books on another floor, things like that, so that instead of multiple desks, we might only need one reference desk and one computer sort, you know. So yeah, we're looking at those things, but it was, he's not doing the nuts and bolts of background.
Because depending on how we make it structured to go with that, then it may change, would it change the use of how the, the technology would be laid out?
It shouldn't. When we built the building, we put a, a, a ground port, or whatever you call it, a, a port for the computers every ten feet, now it's wireless. I mean, things like that are, are becoming more portable, not less.[1683.33] This is going to be the brains behind the wall that nobody sees that helps everything go. And this is, it's probably leapfrogged a couple of iterations of what they learned in the last ten years, because you know how, as a computer, things change. But, so I do believe that this incorporates as much as possible, but it will not be covered by that particular study that we were undertaking.
Okay, Council, down in the opposition, the board to the July twentieth. All right, thank you. Next title is the public arts requirement for site development in the new.
What I'm presenting here is, it's come up in various forms from the council on case-by-case basis or on a site plan where you'd be going through a site development plan and you would say, can you put a piece of art on the corner, or can you incorporate a piece of art on your site development? And with the exception of the overlay development district, which gives us that option that's negotiated between the council and the property owners through a development agreement, we don't have any such requirement for public art on the books. In working with the attorney's office and ourselves, we researched, and East Lansing recently adopted the public art requirement, where they require one percent of the total development cost for anything over two point five million dollars to be allocated towards public art on the site with a cap of twenty-five thousand dollars. So we took, we did that model and vetted it through the Arts Commission and vetted it through the Planning Commission, and we tweaked it and said that we would like to see one half of one percent dedicated for projects that are one million dollars up to two point five million with a cap of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and anything over one percent of two point five million dollars and greater with a cap of twenty-five thousand dollars be allocated specifically for art. And the definition of works of art was defined in the ordinance sixteen thirty that the council adopted establishing the Arts Commission, which basically says that sculpture in any material or combination of materials, painting, all media, including portable and permanently affixed works, such as murals and frescoes, photography, mosaics, mixed media, any combination or form of media in collage, water features and fountains, and streetscape and landscaping elements, signage, lighting benches, closets, kiosks, and planters. The definition of public art or works of art is pretty broad, and if you remember that when Denso came here for their sign, who asked for some additional art to be incorporated as part of the medium, and that was an ask, and they voluntarily said, we'll do that. This makes it part of the site plan requirement, no different than so many trees are required on site, signage has to be of a certain way. The other thing this does for us is it starts to build a fund. So for projects on major redevelopment or redevelopment, if they don't want to invest that money for art on their site, they can put into an art fund, similar to the tree fund. And so some people might have a requirement of planting twenty trees, they only want to plant ten trees, and they have a formula of three hundred dollars a tree for the remaining ten, they write a check for three thousand dollars, that gets put into the tree trust fund, and then the city can judiciously use that to plant trees in public spaces. And we see this concept of art, maybe every property owner doesn't want to get into art itself, or they might want to do part of their fund into art on site, and then they might want to write a check that goes into an art fund that then the city has available for art installation throughout the city. So I'm here just to introduce the concept. We have a public hearing scheduled for next month, you decided to move forward on this, but to take any comments that you have. We have, I think I included the three-page ordinance, and that's based on templates that we've seen other communities utilize, plus some tweaking specific to Southfield. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Ms. Mandelbaum. Based on this structure, so would that hinder people from wanting to redevelop or redevelopment within the city because they say, oh, well, you know, if I'm with it, obviously, you're spending two and a half million dollars, twelve thousand dollars, it's not, it's not, when you look at it, it's not a big amount of change, but it could make a difference in some of their decisions.
Well, I'll use the example of DIRK. That was a forty million dollar project, and they voluntarily agreed to add some art. There was no structure to what that looked like or how that was incorporated, and they probably are spending tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand plus, on site development. And we asked, again, as an entry feature, if they planted a plaza and did some flagpoles and some additional elements, that would qualify as art, and they could get credit for their twenty-five thousand dollars towards that. In some cases, like a ring clinger that came in through the ODD, art is one of those negotiated pieces, and they said, yes, we will be willing to purchase a piece of art and put it on our site. What we don't have is for other developments, is this. And it's flexible enough that a lot of things could qualify as art, and not just, I'm going to purchase a statue and put it here. But it also encourages site development to think in that direction. So I don't believe that this is going to be a hindrance. It's about reutilizing funds that they may already have allocated, but make it more specific towards art, artworks. And really, if you think in the big scheme of forty million dollar project, even a ten million dollar project, maximum we're talking about is twenty-five thousand dollars. The, for example, again, the Jonah Development, which was a twelve to fourteen million dollar site, they voluntarily agreed to put a monument plaza to pay homage to Saint Beat on the corner. That easily is going to exceed the twelve thousand five hundred or whatever that allocation is. And then on real small projects, our, Ms. Mandelbaum, is that we're not going to hinder a small addition to a building and then require art because it's not going to reach the threshold of these guidelines.
Now, you also made reference to the tree fund. Do we want to, just thinking, how to head, would we want to put a cap on how much they would have to give for, for the, if they decide for the art fund or for the tree fund, a total cap, because they're independent of each other?
The tree fund was established as part of the Woodland Wetlands Ordinance twenty, thirty years ago, and there's already a formula. If anything needs to be updated, because we only require three hundred dollars for the purchase and installation of other trees, which barely covers the cost of a decent-sized tree. And so that's independent of this, and there's already a formula in place that I think is working, working well. And many times we find that it's usually a hybrid. Developers say, I'm willing to plant a dozen trees on my site, but I don't want to plant twenty-five or thirty trees, and we'll write you a check for the difference. And then that money goes into a pot of funds that the city can use in our parks, in our right-of-way. It allows us to have a little more flexibility. If there's an area, a neighborhood, we can plant those trees using those funds. I think what we'll see in the future is this will become a checklist on the site plan, just like you have to have so many parking spaces, you have to have signage, you have to have landscaping, and then we'll get a little more detail on what that looks like. And the council ultimately, on each site plan, will get the final approval, but we'll have input from our various advisory boards and committees on what constitutes or qualifies as artwork.
Mayor Pataki.
At the council president's meeting, I had two comments to make regarding where we were headed. And I guess what I, I just got a bit irritated with is because I stated that if we have an arts commission, there ought to be some kind of communications that comes to the council and mayor and administrator, so that, so that whatever they're working on, you're aware of, there's no minutes. I was told, I guess, it's an attitude that if I want to see where the meetings are and when, I look kind of bored. So I suggest that all boards and commissions and dates are given to council and mayor and provided in a package, so they know when all boards and commissions meet, what time they're at. You know, I tell you with all due respect, you know, I guess I've been around here a long time, and I just think that gets me in trouble because I see the way things used to work and how they're working now, and I think we're way off base. We had a curator that was in the Parks and Recreation, named Marilyn Bellinger, and they, and we had a chairman of the arts to lead, and you had a curator in the Parks and Recreation that led the group and made council aware of everything that was happening. And, you know, I've been around a while, you know, back in nineteen seventy-nine, you know, we had, we had arts commission, you know, and some of the things, you know, we had Southfield Civic Theater, concerts in Prudential, summer workshops, Southfield Arts Council, start of the art in the park, Adventures in Art, Art Rodeo Program, Symphony Orchestra, Sonics, magical concerts, rantsmanship, arts through schools, so on and so on. A ton of activities that were produced through that vision of having a curator in Parks and Recreation and working with the commission to bring arts to the city. And I think it's important not to make what I was doing, you know, I received a national award for performing arts and having arts done in the city of Southfield. We led the state and we led the United States in performing arts and outdoor arts, and what we provided of so many of these things for that year. So, you know, I go back, I go back, we had project description, we had project description, we had Michigan Council of Arts, we had, we had a letter from, I'll get it for a minute, we're talking about this item up here, as it said, from, to McDermott, no, it's been the council president, McDermott, it's important that I read it, because I thought I put it up on top here. I guess you're organized, but I guess you did. We had a consortium, Business Consortium, and Marilyn Bellinger also had the data, so she chaired that, and got a business community involved in that, and also in the Parks and Recreation, we did all these various things. In eighty-four, and it's interesting, the city of Southfield enacted an ordinance requiring to set aside for public art one percent of each appropriation to cover costs of new city construction and renovation projects with exceed five hundred thousand dollars. That was back in nineteen eighty-four. So I don't know why, you know, and I don't care if staff or anybody cares, but nobody ever asks, you know, where we've been and how we got there, and how we got to be Southfield. And what we do is become redundant about all this stuff, but it all exists, everything exists. And that's all it has to do is say, has anybody got any information regarding the Arts Council? I made this available to Mr. Sager, and I said, you know, and here's all these records all the way back to seventy-nine, and that shows how the consortium was started, and some of the things, the ordinance that we passed at that time. Here's the Business Consortium of the Arts, nineteen, was that eighty-four?
Eighty-four.
Was it ninety-four? City Center Plaza sculptures, and Business Consortium of the Arts is a business support organization. It goes on to committee's activities with the, and tells how we went about in getting artwork for the city. And I guess, you know, I sit here sometimes and I wonder, you know, sometimes you read books to be informed, and sometimes you might ask somebody who's been around a little bit, what we used to do, and we used to win the national awards, these things, and we're starting all over again, and I just don't understand why we're wasting our time when we should be going back or maintaining what we did before, you know? And then, Jones, and here we have the symphonies here in the pavilion, and we had so many activities that then we decided to buy the name David for Health Culture Building, you know, and that fell true because it just didn't work. But we had, was it Nancy Wilson? And who was the other gentleman?
Oh, we had Nancy Wilson.
Harry Bellinger.
Yeah. You know, and not enough, the other cities found out we had them, and they grabbed them, you know, right after we got through. And so, if that is the formula that you're using, you know, I have nothing against it, but all I'm trying to say is that when the Arts Council was formed, you know, they were set out on the side and nobody seen what they were doing, how they were doing it, until they want council to pull them out of something. Well, this thing has to work as a team. All these things that came along back then were all decided, concerts, Bellinger would meet with council, talk about what kind of projects we're going forward with, and she paid her own way, by the way, through fundraisers, by having these concerts and all these initiatives in the city, because it cost us a penny. And so, I guess I'm bending because, you know, it's such a waste of time, you got to wait for RFQ for three months, and we feel strange around with something that would have been available immediately, and it just bothers me, so I think I'm wasting my time around here, you know? I just want to bend it.
Okay, those are good points. I think, you know, originally, the intent tonight was to have the commission helping you and updating what they were working on and talk about a broad array of projects including this. I think it was decided that joint meeting between the council and the board, one single item, where you could just focus on getting input from the council was maybe the better approach. I think that's what we talked about moving forward. But we did have this one specific item that came, that originally came from the direction of council to have us investigate. Since we've already advertised for this one particular item for public hearing next week, we wanted to be able to get input, are we on the right track? Is this, you know, the right direction that we're going in? Is there additional feedback that we need? But this is, this is part of a larger strategy to implement art in our community and to identify some funding sources as well. And so that's specifically what's here before council tonight, and then we are going to work with council in bringing the Arts Commission on a joint, one-on-one, single item to talk about all the other things that the commission's been working on. I can tell you that, you know, to date, they've had four meetings. The first meeting was just getting our bylaws and things up, the snuff, and we've been working specifically from the ordinance and the charges of the ordinance that was adopted. And it's an appropriate time to come and to give you an update and to work and get some direction from the council about next steps.
I think the important thing that I mentioned, and this was just overlooked again, you need a curator, the one that goes out and makes contacts, the state, federal government for arts, there's all kinds of grants out there. And one of the first jobs, I would believe, that after they pick a chairman, would go try to find out, and with the administrator, how we can get to get a curator so that that person can work with the Arts Commission and get some of these grants out there. There's tons and tons of, excuse me, arts have a lot of grants that are just laying out there, especially for the arts. I mean, everybody wants artwork, it's the thing. It was the New Millenniums, even more so. And I was taking all kinds of new looks and whatever and values, and I'm just, I'm just trying to help out here to get an organization going and put things back the way they used to be so we can win these national wars and get recognition to the city for having one of the best art programs in the United States, which we did.
Mr. Cruz.
I can muddy this up anymore, but I thought the ordinance was moving in the right direction, first of all, but I want to kind of go back to Ms. Mandelbaum's point about the tree fund too. Is there any way that that might be able to be integrated, because it needs to be updated anyway? It's all interesting if it's all around city beautification, making things look better. So that there's not two separate ordinances, companies are getting things, if you will, twice on different projects, that, you know, that you create a central fund for all of these efforts, because they all kind of fall under that umbrella of beautification of the city, whether it be public art or whether it be landscaping or trees, interested in the kind of broad list of things that that could fall under. Would that make things more difficult for us, or do you think it's cleaner to have a separate ordinance?
Well, again, we can always look at it, there's always room for improvement, and the ordinance, the tree ordinance was adopted about thirty years ago, and I think at some point we talked, we did a little investigation, we gave some recommendations on maybe making some tweaks. But the tree ordinance is part and parcel of the zoning ordinance, this would be part and parcel of the zoning ordinance, so. and parcel of the zoning ordinance, so it would be covered under all the reviews, whether it's administrative review or site plan review, and in that way, they work together.
Okay.
But if there was, in some cases, people wanna leave trees that don't trigger site plan, and so therefore, you have a formula in place for either replacing trees on site or into the fund, and many times, I'm surprised that even at the individual residential level, they're more apt to pay into a fund than they are to have trees replanted on their site. And we work, we work no interest payment plans and say, you know, you can pay so much a month for a year, and we do that too. So, we try to work with smaller, either residents or businesses to not make it a burden.
So, is there somebody out there to just pay into this, right? Do they have to pay the maximum amount, if they have to do it with the?
Well, it's really, it's, so for example, one million dollars to two point five, it's a formula, this would be the maximum amount that they would pay in.
Okay, so a spread percent, whatever it is.
Yeah, the percentage of whatever it is, and then there's a cap, so that if it's forty million or a hundred million, they're not gonna spend more than twenty-five thousand. And really, on those bigger developments, a small little area will easily eat up twenty-five thousand dollars. It's just more of a focus, instead of saying, let's just throw this out, you know, it'll be more identifiable improvements upfront.
Mr. Ray.
Yeah, um, when, uh, Mayor Bassi was talking, he read that article that, there was, was that an ordinance that indicated that it was one percent on five hundred thousand?
It was allied corporations as part of the Business Consortium asking that that be done.
I don't recall.
In a letter to the president McDermott.
Pardon? I don't recall we had an ordinance that required it, that might have been a, something they worked out.
It was something they were working on.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, 'cause we'd have conflicting ordinances on the books.
Right, no, we, we don't have that on the books. I know that the Arts Commission, the old one, was abolished, because it was by ordinance, it was created by ordinance, and then it was, actually, that ordinance was rescinded when council determined that they didn't need that anymore, it was just under Parks and Rec. So, I, but I've never seen anything that was something akin to this where it was a percentage of the...
Or ordinance ten sixteen?
That was the commission itself, it had cultural arts, yeah, and then that was, that was rescinded by council. That's where we were left with nothing, so the new ordinance was passed to establish the Arts Commission.
And that commission, if I recall, was also about the performing arts as part of that.
Yeah, I was just saying, that's a much broader than, than what we're...
Well, that's what the curator did.
Right, correct.
They put everything into arts, the multitude of different kinds of artwork.
Right, and I think, if I recall, council, when you pass the public arts ordinance, you did talk about, you know, this is just gonna be a start...
Yeah, we're taking baby steps.
Yeah, and we'll look at them broadening what the arts are in terms of that commission.
But I understand that, but, and I, I don't, you know, I don't follow my stuff or not, but everything is here the way it started, putting together the Business Consortium of the Arts, and how the organization was fit with the curator, the Parks and Rec, they board, hired, got their chair, the chair then had minutes and gave them to council and elected officials. I think, you know, like they had city center plaza sculpture, uh, the Business Consortium back to ninety-four, and, you know, the development list of potential artists to be invited to compete, the opportunity and funding to supply the sculpture, organize the women judges to select, the shortlist of artists to be invited to compete, the judges would be comprised of business city and art people, be firm understanding what is necessary for a fashionable piece of art. I mean, one of the things, what I'm saying, the research papers, and what they did, you know, I mean, could be important to the commission or anybody else, but it all, but it all came around, and we really went bananas with our arts, is when we had a curator that had the outdoor sculpture exhibit and worked with the state, the federal government, that got a lot of the grants, and it became, like the Paris, the Paris Ball, I think, was over thirty thousand dollars they raised, it went, it went night, you know, event. And, but, I mean, it was kind of like funding and working and bringing things in on a cost basis, and we ran all different kinds of fields. You know, the symphony, I think Jones, I remember the Scandinavian symphony that we had here, you know, and in the pavilion, and it was jammed, you know, and then all of a sudden, you know, we just didn't fund it anymore. But it was making money, and, you know, and hard times come to all the symphonies, just because people stopped going to them because they found other venues to go to. But, but I guess what I'm really getting at is that, is that they should go through and see where we were, and if they find something in here that better, you know, creates some better situation for, you know, it's like everything else, the more you learn, the more you know.
Yeah, what are you, what are you asking us for tonight?
Well, it's just a discussion, because we have our public hearing scheduled next week, to input on this, adopting this as part of an ordinance requirement. Yeah, so I just, I wanted to be able to, we've done our research, we were directing to come back to council at some point, we've done our research, we vetted it through the Arts Commission and the Planning Commission, and I'm here to present a recommendation and to get input if you wanna move forward with this item or not, because it is, it has been advertised for next week, just unfortunately, because they're back-to-back weeks, we didn't have that leg time to be in a study session and to write the rules, I guess, what?
We did pass it, pardon, right?
Passed the ordinance.
You passed the Public Arts Commission ordinance?
Yes.
Right, yes, you did.
And one of the charges was to look at ways of funding art and promoting art, and this, and also, at previous council meetings, there's always been the ask about incorporating art, art site plan.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's the charge that we're bringing this back from here.
Okay, 'cause we're talking about two or three or four different things, and I just wanna make sure that I wanna talk about the same thing that you wanna talk about. Can you explain how takings gets involved in it?
Yeah, I mean, this was, again, Ken Marcy looked at this in my office, but it was, it was a, kind of a way that East Lansing had kinda laid it out, and I think they were concerned that by having a requirement in here, if it was so onerous that somebody was denied the economic usefulness of their property because of this requirement, that there should be some mechanism in here to avoid a taking kind of clause. Because if, let's say, a person, for whatever reason, and again, I don't know if these numbers are enough to justify it, but they say, look, for you, for you to say I would have to pay twenty-five thousand dollars, no, that makes my property really economically not viable. So, that's, that could be a taking claim because of the regulation that we had in place, and so, I think that's all East Lansing was trying to do, was come up with some kind of a failsafe here, and it could be looked at on a real, you know, case-by-case basis, if somebody made that claim, it could really make it out to the satisfaction of the city that it could be, it could be exempted from the requirement under our ordinance.
Okay, so, keep us up for it.
Exactly, rather than just walk ourselves into litigation by a ordinance, it's just, it's almost like what we do on the moratorium, you know, we establish that moratorium, but we also have at the end of that, that paragraph that says, if somebody wanted to open a business that, and we're currently under a moratorium, and they can come before council and show the hardships they have, council could go ahead and let them open a business even though the moratorium was in effect. So, same thing here, same thing.
Basically, I don't have any problem with moving forward on this, you know, I know this was really Ken's baby, and I talked to him about it, and he said that he thought it was gonna be a one percent all the way, but he could live with half percent, one percent.
Well, if I could, again, it started off as one percent based on what East Lansing had, but it was the recommendation of the Arts Commission and the Planning Commission that we look at a lower threshold, it wasn't as onerous for smaller projects, and that's where the, again, it's a recommendation that we also include this one half percent.
I mean, what difference does it make if you have one percent with a maximum of twelve thousand five hundred, or half percent with a maximum of twelve thousand five hundred?
The only difference is that we've lowered the threshold, and for the half percent, it's a project of one million dollars and above, up to two point five million, otherwise it's one percent or two point five million and above. So, we're trying to, we're trying, we lessen the threshold, but we're also lessing the requirement.
You're right, on a million dollar project, the five percent, the point five percent is what, five thousand dollars? If you went to the one percent, even with the cap of twelve thousand five, it's ten thousand, right? So, so it, it does, it does work differently, the way that it's structured, it would, it would work differently.
Again, there's also a lot of flexibility in what we count towards what the arts, and again, that's, that would be input through the site plan, you know, you're ultimately, you could say, yes, we'll consider that a work of art or no, no we won't.
Well, because the Public Arts Commission ordinance establishes a definition for public art, it's very expansive, it is not just a sculpture, landscaping, it could be benches, it could be a fountain, it could be, so the fact then that they have to put ten thousand dollars toward the public art, and you deemed in the site plan that the fountain qualifies, there they are.
Yeah, that's your relief to protect.
That's our relief as well, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mandabob.
Was there any discussion addressing this about nonprofits, or, for example, like a house of worship that was building a, a new building or redeveloping, would they be exempted or would they still be included? They would, they would be included just based on the threshold of the investment. So, we didn't make any, there was no discussion of excluding whether it was a nonprofit, a profit, a religious institution or not. If it qualified for site plan, for something for your site plan, and it was a certain level of development, then it would trigger this requirement. And it's, it's a good faith, we're gonna ask them, what is, it's just like when someone files out a building permit, the fees are based on the amount of the cost of the development. It's, it's a good faith, if someone says it's nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, we're not gonna round it up to say a thousand, you're gonna need this requirement.
Yeah, I, I think you brought up a good point about religious institutions, but I was
thinking maybe we needed a skate clause in this type of ordinance, or, I mean, what's a hospital, you know, you have a hospital coming in, do they have to have a work of art?
Well, again, I think the hospital coming in is probably a pretty significant development, and I can't believe that somewhere within the definition of public art, in terms of landscaping or hardscape, that we can't come up with something where a hospital would find value in it for themselves as well.
Well, I mean, maybe they'd rather have something inside, you know, for the hospital and they are all the time, but I think, I think to use a skate clause for certain, like an exemption for certain, certain situations, I really don't know.
Well, I, I think that you can almost argue, I mean, if, if the public arts is, is part of site plan, and you now exempt hospitals or nonprofits from, are you exempting them from all site plan requirements?
Of course not.
Well, then, why would we pick this one out and say they're...
Because you're asking them to make an additional investment or spend money on something that has something to do with their business.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
The design of the building might be the art.
It could be, it could absolutely be.
That's different.
Well, but, but it could qualify, that's where I think...
I think you need, I think you need an exception.
Do we, we don't for the tree fund, I mean, if they take trees down...
But that's a, that's a whole different...
The only, only if they're hazardous, you know, like if it's gonna fall on somebody...
Right, right, dangerous trees, right.
Dangerous trees.
But trees perform, I mean, trees keep the, help to keep the air, you know, they're not part of preventing or helping to prevent worship, anything that's wrong with worship.
It's just by us saying that this is important under a zoning ordinance, that it's a site plan requirement, it's just, it would be odd to me to say then that certain types of uses would be exempt from a site plan requirement.
I'm not saying they would, I think that you need, I'm just saying I think you need a skate clause in certain situations. All right, I mean, obviously, not really think so, but I think it would be worth considering. I'm, I mean, the trees, the trees thing is totally different, I don't think, I wouldn't mix the tree fund with public art by any means, they're totally different, they're totally different. I do like the idea, what Nancy Tocchi was talking about, going back to the days of Marla Ballinger, she was excellent at getting the grants and the stage, she just had a great second connection, and she did a lot of grants for us, so, art programs, and I think I'd like to see that art thing expand into music and to do other things besides just sculpture and art, you know? But, we did do a lot of stuff that we don't do now. We did a lot of concerts, we did art shows, she retired, and some of the leading people on the board, who are now...
Mayor Tocchi.
I was just gonna, you know, partially, like, we did many regs on the site plans, for example, they come in and they wanna do a store, we make them put in a bike rack, mandatory, and now you're gonna have to make it mandatory to put money into arts. And I'm just concerned about, we're talking about getting, getting all our plans and getting them out in, in, in the better timelines than we have now, and then we're gonna show more stuff there. And the bike racks, I mean, I've had guys come up to me and say, if I gotta put a cartboard up, why do I have to put a bike rack at the community house? And nothing to do with his request. And, and we held that to it, we didn't give them the request. And I'm saying is that there's difference between asking and making it mandatory, and in the case I just read to you, is where the Business Consortium made, made it appear like they were asking the city to apply this, so that the city wasn't saying, oh, then you put in a bike rack, you go ahead, you wanna do this, you go ahead and pay for the arts. And I think there's a big difference when you overload by the guy that's trying to get his site plans through the city and just look at all these things that we have approved.
That's the, that's the...
You know, I had a guy, I don't think I knew him, because somebody went up to him, told him he had to cut the bushes down in front of this window of his house, somebody turned him in, and he, he came to me, and he says, what do you mean, I love those trees, why, why do I have to take them down? Well, you can't have bushes in front of a window of a house.
Right.
I mean, you know, it gets to the point where, you know, I mean, who owns the house? Who, who do you own anymore?
My concern is, yes, I remember what we talked about, designated funds for the arts, but after we funded budgetary and seen the need for the street, I do think we need to look at, like, separation to give back, I think our community needs a little bit more in arts, you know, the youth center needs computers, some of our kids need training, money for training for IT, personal rec, we've spent all the money for youth, each group needs interior painting, and we just restrict corporations to give to public art. I think we're cutting, cutting ourselves short because there's so many other needs in the city that we have, we're only definitely going to fund the arts. I think we need to just take a step back and look at the big picture of what we need in the community, and then designate dollars for it, but I'm just not in favor of moving forward, I think I agree with the mayor, we're, we're making so many demands on our businesses, and I'm just not in favor of moving forward. And I'm just not in favor of moving forward on this.
That's right, Missy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm getting an example. If a grocery, if a large grocery store wanted to move in. Wouldn't they do like, if they did, if a large grocery store, you know, building a store. Are we gonna decide if a grocery store...
If they hit a million dollar threshold.
And on their property, usually you wanna go to Kroger's or whatever and see a piece of art. I, I really...
That's what the sources would do.
No, but I think it's wrong. I'm just saying it's wrong. For a church to come in and require a church and, um, you know, members gift, acquire... I mean, I think there has to be some exemption. An office building, a business, a profit-making business, I think, I just would say there has to be some exemption or a state clause. But I can't require another church. I can't require another school. I can't say requiring that...
We don't see the same place for a school.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't see the same place for a school.
I know, I know, I know, I know. But I'm just throwing that out as an example, you know. Um, I just, I guess I kind of agree with the council president, I think, I think they have to, I think they have to...
I just had a question, Jason, your comment with, you know, all these other areas need help. And maybe we should have some businesses maybe help in those areas. But wouldn't that be the same, I'm just trying to understand, but wouldn't that be very similar to having them have public art? So, instead of saying, you need to spend money on public art, you have to spend money into a fund that helps the city with its maintenance or...
Right.
And that's what... So, I guess my question, how is that, the same idea of putting restrictions on them for maintenance or for computers for the field zone? You know, that's the, that's the boys and girls problem. How much involvement Southfield has in what they do can be determined. But, to me, they're almost the same thing. One, you're requiring public art, one, you're just saying, please help us fund improvements in our parks and rags and our, you know, youth park and things like that.
It is the same thing, but with this, you're asking all the new development and new businesses to give it to a regard. And there's nothing else considered for anything else. I'm saying we need to have a big picture of what we need.
But this is tied to the site plan process. You gotta be careful. There's, Michigan doesn't permit impact fees. And when you get into broader definitions, you can begin to look, be looking like you've got an impact fee. And I think there's been written carefully enough that it's tied to the site planning process. I don't think, I don't know how you could write some of these other things to the site planning process without looking like you have...
No, I, I almost thought you thought even a voluntary basis.
A voluntary basis would be...
Is that if they gotta pay this, and they gotta pay this, and they gotta pay this, and then you say, but it couldn't be computers for the field zone. They're gonna be like, oh, you just didn't eat three different kinds. Right. So, does that...
But we'll be destroyed.
Right, right.
Not only anything...
What you're saying through the, through the chair, um, so it's difficult to raise those questions and tie it to a site plan approval if you're asking funding.
Oh, you couldn't tie it to a site plan approval.
I wanna be clear, you know, that you can't... It's not, it's not the same as tying it to a site plan and then say, as part of this, we're giving fifteen thousand dollars.
But usually, if they've given, if this should pass, and if they've given to a public art, they're not gonna say, I mean, you're not gonna say, okay, what else do you need me to give to you? It's gonna be one or the other.
Well, we just say stick 'em up.
It's taken a process if you want this car. Move forward, it's too hard. You gotta do it, we, one day we'll start with a new tool. Yep. Did you manage that? You're afraid?
Yes.
And I think that as well, so we're moving forward now.
I don't want to jump there with the approval, but it costs, it's, uh, northbound.
Chairman President, City Engineer Ray Schultz will be speaking at the site. Uh, we also have a representative from O H, uh, O H M here.
Hello again. You can start and end with me this one. A little less fun, but also positive in the end. So, um, we have the rehabilitation of the Northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive, which we need nine miles, it's under construction right now. Uh, this project was bid, it was, it has federal funds, so it goes through the MDA bid letting process. So, when we get that agreement, when council approves that agreement, that's all based on the cost estimate. And then after that agreement is signed, well, kind of around the same time, then the project is bid. And by the time it's awarded, it's based on the actual bid prices. In this particular case, the bid prices came in twelve percent higher than the estimate. So, the bid prices came in at three point two million, with the cost estimate was two million eight hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. So, there's a difference, because in this particular project, these federal funds are capped. So, this difference of three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars has to be borne fully by the SBA Southfield, because our federal dollars are capped. So, the project consisted of milling overlay, milling off the existing asphalt, replacing any deteriorated concrete sections, doing some major new patching, and make that ready for a new asphalt overlay. Uh, the three bridge intersections at Providence Drive, JL Hudson, and North Park were always going to be reconstructed, those three, just so that we could meet the appropriate grade at the bridge deck. So, what, what we found now, the construction began the last week of May, and by mid-June, all the existing asphalt had been milled off of the surface. And we were finding much higher amount of concrete patching quantities than we had anticipated. And we, I was contacted by O H M advisors, our project engineers on this project, that we, we really needed to take a step back and see how we should best proceed with the rest of the project. Because we were getting to a point where our concrete patches, um, to, to make an appropriate base for the asphalt overlay were costing four hundred fifty thousand dollars more than we had anticipated costing. And the south half of the project really had progressed far enough with the concrete patches that it made sense to continue with the concrete patches and overlay for that section. But for the north half of the project, looking at the numbers, we were already gonna have to spend an additional four hundred and fifty thousand. If we spend another sixty, we can just totally reconstruct that north half of the service drive project. Um, this is for an additional cost altogether of additional construction of five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So, this additional money, we get our long-lasting, durable, fully reconstructed north half of the project. It does change the completion date from end of July to about end of September, is where we're looking. Uh, I did do some backgrounds. Originally, this project, we had three R money, so that's our rehabilitation dollars. And we were thinking that, okay, we're gonna take that three R money and do a total reconstruction. So, early in the design process, we go out and we do cores of the pavement existing, so we can see what's underneath, because we can't see under that asphalt. And we were pleasantly surprised at the condition of the concrete in many of the areas. So, we were thinking, wow, maybe this definitely need to be reconstructed. We can salvage this with some concrete patches. And I swear, we got so lucky with all fourteen of those soil boards. We, we had maybe two, you know, bad boards of all fourteen. And we were really surprised when we milled off that surface and, and found as much bad pavement as we did. And it wasn't all just the pavement slabs. A lot of it was also gutter as well. So, the face of the curb looked pretty good with the asphalt overlay. When that gets, once that is milled off, you also have the gutter pan where the water leaves. And that was all believed deteriorated in many areas. So, between the concrete patches and the curb and gutter replacement started driving our costs up and up. So, between those two, our twelve percent over the bid estimate plus the scope of work increase, this is an additional cost of eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars to this project. So, our cost share went from approximately one point two million to almost two point one million for this project.
Just had a funny question. Um, so last weekend also, we spoke about being, uh, underfunded for road construction based on the, the estimate. Is this something that's reoccurring, or is this just because, um, I guess the question is, why does it keep happening? That some of these bids are...
Well, I think that prices are coming in higher than anyone had anticipated. And we were anticipating increasing costs, and that was taken into account. They, MDA is very particular, they review our cost estimates, line item by line item, to make sure that our prices are in line with what they've been seeing on their bid. So, these, these cost estimates were not conservative enough. And I, I think that if you bid a project come October, that the cost estimates are probably for, if we had bid the exact same amount, same amount of work, we'll probably be a lot closer to where these bids actually came in. Because they're really seeing that across the board, and each month, they have a bid letting, and they're seeing a lot of the prices coming in high. Anytime it's more than ten percent is where we have the option to reject the bid. So, anything under ten percent, we don't have that option. They continue to move forward. If you're within ten percent of the estimate, then that's considered good and acceptable. Um, in this particular case, a little bit over ten percent, we were at twelve. But this particular section of road was in such bad shape, this really could not be put off. It would've pushed it to another construction year, and we couldn't handle another winter on that road with our motors to be able to travel daily.
Anyone else? Mr. Gray here?
You're talking about the Northbound?
Yes.
That's the one where it run, go from three to two lanes?
Yes.
Um, is the road all torn out now?
Yes.
So, we really don't have a choice?
Yeah, I mean, this...
We could've put asphalt down, but your base was shot.
Oh, I mean...
I mean, so we really don't have a choice.
That's what I said. We don't, we don't have a choice. The road's all torn out now.
When, when this landed in my office, this base is so shot, my first question is, how many cores did we do? Well, we did the cores, and those samples came back, it was just where we picked them. The concrete with those cores appeared to be good. This seems to be the pitfall of when we do these milling overlays, because we had the repeat situation on Civic Center three years ago. When we pulled off the asphalt cap and got to the base, the road, that base was literally bubbleized. And that's what we have happen here. Um...
Definitely more than unknown, as when, when you're going in with a four R job, a total reconstruction. You know, there's not, there's not too many unknowns, except maybe some private utilities in the ground that we have conflicts with. But for the most part, you're removing everything, so you get to start from scratch. It's these three R jobs that sometimes offer us surprises. You're pretty aggressive with the number of soil boards that we did. I, I think I was, I was surprised that, that we had as much of these patches on our budget.
The difference, another factor is with the, the federal aid committee, is that we're at, when we go, this year, we were asking for funding for 2018. And our dollar amounts are being capped. And that's one of the points of exposure we have, because yes, we're getting federal aid, but those numbers aren't being adjusted to represent what's happening in inflation factors of road construction, which is grossly exceeding the normal one point six, one point five percent we're seeing, and what we see the C P I.
Um, when you did the estimate, how many cement patches were you, or concrete patches were you expecting? And how many do you have now? That drove it up another half million dollars.
Yeah, Mark, you might want to add detail.
I'm Mark Locke with O H M. I was the project manager on the design of the job. Um, what we did is, we have to estimate the number of patches. Obviously, we can't see it. We can see the asphalt surfaces. We make a guess, and we assume twenty-five percent the total area of pavement was gonna be, has to be patched. When we got out there, we were approaching fifty percent. Once you get to that kind of number, it starts to, the value of patching a job really kind of goes down. You're better off reconstructing that roadway, and that's where we were with this road. We had almost doubled the amount of patches.
Okay, now, when you do coring, how do you determine where you're gonna go? Should it just be random?
It's just random. Yeah, yeah. Randomly pick them. We don't pick them in the best spots, not necessarily worst spots. We just randomly pick, pick...
I'm, I'm really trying to understand the circumstances that you're dealing with right now. So, you pick random, fourteen random spots to do coring? And, um, it looked good, reasonable, looked reasonable. And now it's not?
Right. It looked worth saving.
Okay, now, my question is, are the places where it surprised you, are they in between, are they running sequential along? In other words, did you, did you bore here, and you bored here, and it looks like it was okay? But in between those two borings, everything's vast?
No, not, not really. It, uh, the southern half of the road, the, the borings, the, the road is in a little better shape for some reason. We were able to salvage that, as we mentioned, we did some patches, and we can overlay that. The northern half of the road, which some of the cores looked great. You know, that core is only, you know, a four inch circle. It's just a, a spot location. It just so happened that, you know, the areas surrounding it were so bad that, you know, can't just save that one slab, or, you know, it just...
So, you ruined the only good spot you could have borrowed?
You know, it would seem like that. It would seem like that, because we, you know, we could show you the cores, and it's like, they were in pretty decent shape. It was worth trying to save. The easy, quite, the easy thing would've been just to say, reconstruct the whole thing.
Well...
But, you know, that's not where we were when we saw the cores.
Yeah, the, the concern that, that I have, and you probably agree with me, is that same thing happened about four years ago on Franklin Road, where we had a million dollar job that had an eight hundred thousand dollar fix to it. Here, we have a million dollar job, and we have a half a million dollar fix to it. Um, I mean, that's...
Big enough?
Yeah. Now, my question to Fred is, we have spent the money that we were anticipating spending. What are we not gonna do that we're gonna use that money for?
Well, my first statement is, we're, we, we know there are changes happening to the state about. Um, aside from that, we're continuing to leverage our numbers to get more federal dollars. So, there are things in the federal aid committee that we haven't put into the mix. So, yes, another eight hundred thousand's gonna come out of our limited amount of money. But I'm confident this early in the game, that we're going to be able to leverage other federal dollars that we weren't necessarily counting on. So, that's part of, you're on the buster, I made reference that this year's federal aid committee for 2018, we, we, just under forty percent of the funds were committed to Southfield. You know, so because we were able to better, um, better work the formulas and increase our match to get more federal dollars. And when we did a lot of the work for the nine, the ninety-nine million, we didn't factor, we didn't build into a coefficient for other federal money coming in. And that's part of, as we go through this exercise, the next nine years, is to leverage more federal and county dollars. Federal, state, county dollars.
I, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if you used a different, if you used a different approach. And the approach is, all things are gonna stay equal. We're not gonna get any more federal dollars. We can't count on it. This is the way, this is the way, uh, the state of Michigan balances its budget. Uh, next year, we're gonna get some more money, and then next year comes along, we don't get the money, and we got the same problem. So, I would rather not count on us getting a, the money tree blooming in our favor, and figuring out what we're not gonna do, but working as hard as we can to get that extra money so that it will be a, it will be a present for us. Then we can do more. But I would rather go in knowing, at least understanding that here are things that we're not gonna do so that we aren't, uh, surprised at the last minute by, uh, well, the federal government money didn't come in, so now we gotta quick hurry up and, and figure out what we're not gonna do and do another rule ten. Um, I mean, what I'm saying... I mean, what I'm saying is, at the last minute, we, we get a, the numbers don't work. And so I'd rather look now and say, nothing better is going to come along. So let's figure out what's going to happen in the next couple of years. But then if it comes along, we've got money that we didn't, we didn't count on, so we can do more things.
And in the 99 million dollar bond, we did not count on that money coming in. But we are going after it. Well, with the Smart Zone and our Brownfield plants, we are putting those infrastructure layers in as well that will give the city a future funding source for those items as well.
Okay, but out of that 99 million dollars is Nine Mile Road, which, yeah, delayed, which got delayed because the-
The bid came in too high.
Yeah, bid came in too high. So I just, you know-
But out of that 99, we also had federal aid coming in too.
Yeah.
And, and I get your point, don't count on it.
Yeah.
I mean, so we, and when we did the 99, the 99 million, we didn't build in a coefficient saying, hey, we're, we're going to be able to get this amount of federal money. But every time, every, every year when that opportunity opens up, we submit our best projects based on our Pacer scoring and how they rate. We massage the numbers, all right, if we increase our match a little bit, we can get more federal dollars.
I, I'd rather do the conservative approach.
Sure.
Okay, that's it.
Actually, Marvin, that's the same thing I, what, what is not going to get done? So if I heard correctly, also, will the road projects for this year all be completed?
Yes. The only, the only item that has been delayed is Nine Mile because the bid prices came in too high. And we're going to bid that out this fall and we hope more work comes in. Hopefully, with what the state of Michigan is doing, communicating with marketplaces, more, more contractors will come back to Michigan. That's one of our issues. And then working with our purchasing department, we're going to be reviewing and casting our net a little bit wider as well, trying to get more concrete people to- So there's nothing not been canceled for this year because of this.
Now, for this year, you know, if we're spending half a million, if we're spending another-
I just want to go back to 99 million. We built a plan for 99 million without counting on anything coming in from the feds. And we know for the next three years, we've got commitments, I, I would have to sit back, but we've got commitments on multiple projects.
I'll just say, a couple of these, these happen again. I mean, you know, we're going to have a world back there.
And a year ago, we were trying to figure out how to do 11 Mile and we were thinking we would do a Lurkwell. Well, we didn't have to do that. We did the 205 Bond Transportation Refinance. And guess what? We didn't have to use that money because we had enough money in our Smart Zone. You know, so we're going to-
I'm sure we will. I'm sure we will.
So the money that we used on 11 Mile, we're using here. This was also that bond refinance.
Right, this was from the 205 Bond, so we haven't even got-
This was not the road bond.
But I, I don't want to lose sight to, on this one section of the road, you're also building a road that will have a 30 to 40 year life versus a mill which was a 10 to 15 year life. So you're also buying something that's going to have a longer shelf life.
Yeah, but you've spent the money.
Yes, you have spent the money.
Can't spend it again.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Brad, on Evergreen Road, past 11 Mile, past 30, are we going to do any work up to like Winchester out, it's so bad? We talked about it, but I mean, have we made any commitment or have we?
Yeah, we do have. Do you have funding? I can't remember offhand now. We have funding from 11 Mile to Winchester. Okay, so that first half mile, we did secure funding, 2018 funding for that half mile.
There's federal aid coming in on that.
Yeah, that's federal aid funding. Well, there's a bigger plan actually, but-
We submitted the application for Evergreen in February 2009. I mean, like, if you, if you listen to the transportation hearing, it is a seven to 10 year process at the federal level. So we, Semcog is working on the 2040 plan for, for the feds. But this council approved Evergreen Road, I think it was February 9th, 2009. I know it was February 2009 and here it is just happening. And whenever we're at federal aid, we're, we're talking 20, 2018. It's, and when you drive these roads, it's like, are we going to, is the road going to hold up?
Right. Well, up to Winchester, it's so bad. And what, what year did you say?
Well, 2018 is the fiscal year that we have the funding.
So that's October 1 of 17 through September 30 of 18.
So one of the things that we, we can do that we were looking at, I talked to Fred about, we don't have funding yet for Evergreen from Winchester to 12 Mile yet. We do have 2016-
But that's not the worst part, the worst part is the low Winchester.
We do have funding, 2016 funding for the 12 to 13 mile project. So what, we kind of sat down to do some brainstorming. This is part of what, you know, we do behind the scenes to try and get the most bang for our buck and what's going to make sense and least disruption. I mean, people have been living through quite a bit on Evergreen already. So we were talking about packaging that two mile project up and doing everything in 2017. So it would be, you know, we would bid it late in 16, so we still hit our, our dates to get our 2016 federal funds. And then advance construct between 696 and 12 Mile before those funds, the federal funds are actually available. So we build that ahead of time and then get refunded. We still think that we can be successful getting federal funds for that Winchester 2 12 Mile piece for 2019, we'll be applying for that. And to try and, you know, get some extra money so that we can get that whole two mile stretch done in one project.
That half mile was so bad, you know it is, that first, from 11 to Winchester, it's so bad.
Yeah, that's going to be another one of those, keep it together until the real project comes.
Well, we need to do some other repairs because it's horrible.
It's not as bad as Nine Mile between Telegraph and Bee. And they don't even have that on the book.
But at, at Nine Mile, we're going to do basically a surface scrap scrape and a half inch, and that'll take us till next, next spring.
No, I'm talking about Telegraph to Bird.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess the question I had on the North Western is, we had six, we did six tests on it, right?
You know, I forget, we did 14.
Fourteen. And it's in a mile. I, I guess, what does it take, take to do a bore? How much money?
You do a plant of bore?
Probably 14 borings. We probably paid $6,000 or $7,000 for those 14 borings.
I guess, knowing the soil in, in Southfield and having experienced Franklin Road and a lot of other roads in the city where, and elsewhere, sewer, where six feet away it could be, it could be a swamp. Why don't they spend the money and do more borings to really find out what's down there? I mean, it's better than $800,000, you know, it's, at least you know what's in there. You know, Evergreen Road here, I know this was a swamp years ago. I mean, east was to a man across the street here and, and you couldn't even, you know, I mean, it was a really swamp. And in Southfield, there's a lot of swamp and I guess, and some places you got a lot of clay. But I guess, I see us having a lot of big change orders and trying to figure out how we could best try to eliminate that, exploring more of what's underneath the concrete or asphalt we were doing. I think on Franklin, we only had four, you know, and that mile. And that was, that was a million dollar project and we had an $800,000 change order. At Franklin, you know, and I guess we came double, almost double price for everything we do.
Franklin was the problem that we helped, the boundary sand that had reached into the sewer system.
Well, the, a lot of-
And here you have some soil, correct?
Well, the, you know, it's the, the concrete itself underneath that is, is really deteriorated. We're hoping, I mean, was there, was there aggregate stuff base found on the concrete?
Yeah, that's, a lot of these roads weren't built properly before because when we're in there digging, we're finding we don't have, and, and that's not unique to Southfield. You know, no base, odd clay. We saw some of that on, on Evergreen Road when they were pulling up the concrete three years ago. There was no aggregate base.
Let me, let me ask you another question then, and I'll go back to what Joe said. When you, when you are finishing Evergreen Road, and this is all magnitude, and you go north, you're, you're, that portion between 11 Mile and Winchester is worse than, than Evergreen Road. It, it matches what you've seen on Greenfield. And, and, and we spent a million dollars to do the county road that wasn't even ours. And here you're going to come off a real nice surface and then you're going to go right into the rubble. And, and it's really, it's really bad. And the other thing is, I, I don't know why we don't sweep the gravel off of these roads when they have so much construction. Because actually, when you're driving on, on these stones, you're just tearing up the concrete more and asphalt more than it was originally. And you look down the whole west side of Evergreen Road where the barrels are. I mean, that's, that's sorpy cherry weeds coming up through the, through the cement and everything else. I mean, it's, it's, it's bad, it's gone. And, and here we're going to do Evergreen from 12 Mile Road to 13 Jeremy's section. And we could be doing this section. And this one needs it more than the other one. And I just, I just try to, you know, figure out how we can be, I guess, more tuned in to getting these things done. It's just like, just like that, that lost your road, you're going to go to the center of mobile. You just sit and drive and if you're sick, you tear your car up. And, and that is going to be done for two more years, I guess.
There's no funding commitment for that. We're, we're actually trying, it's the county road. We're trying to work with them, the Michigan MEDC, to get another grant on, on their road, so.
Isn't there, isn't there some cutting and ash falling that could, that could buy us time on some of these bad roads? I mean, if you can buy it four years, four years, what do they call it?
Just a milling overlay.
Milling on it over there. And, and I don't know how much mile that is, but, you know, it, I know it's a temporary fix, but, but you get your, you got to catch up somehow. And rather than do one perfect road, you know, if you can buy some time, do two perfect roads and do five that are, you know, like, Edward Street, we're doing all concrete again up in that area. Marshall, that one. You know, and, and I know those were bad, but at the same time, you know, we were looking at, took a ride to Birmingham and they were doing some of their neighborhoods with this, what do you call it, knowing?
Knowing.
Right, and advise you four years and you got nice roads to drive on. You know, that, you tear your car up on, on the road and drive there by that Discount Auto Place. You know, you come, you come out to going east and you tear your car up.
Auto zone.
I mean, I, I just, I just think that, you know, this reconstruction is great and, and it's very costly to do it. But maybe, maybe, maybe do a half and half or something to get, make the buck go further.
Well, this road is a half and half. I mean, we're doing a milling and overlay, we're doing concrete, but based on the economics of it. And we're unfortunate.
I could save $100,000 more.
Yeah, I just, we need clarification. Are we doing Evergreen Road between 12 and 13 before we do between 11 and Winchester?
Yeah.
Well, we have funding before, but, I mean, we, we're still trying to get funding for that Winchester to 12 Mile piece so we could possibly turn it into one big project and combine the-
Have test Winchester, although it's really not bad. It really isn't, it's just that part between the freeway, 11 Mile, sort of drive, and Winchester that is so horrible on both sides.
The federal funding, when we go through that points process on those applications, it does not take into account the condition of the road. So what the engineer's job is to determine what the appropriate fix is for that road. And that's why these, these three R dollars, that's where they put the majority of it because they don't want us to wait till the road totally falls apart because then we're, we're spending so much money and it uses up our small pot for the whole county.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, but I mean, if you drive across that road and you have, if you have to, it's so, it's so bad. My car rattles. I mean, it's, it's damaging your wheels, it's damaging your tires.
People cut over to the east side just so that they stay out of the wrecks.
Yep, yep.
Right now, I mean, they're pulling in front of you, trying to go out.
Yeah, you're dodging, I mean, as you're driving and not a hard to drive it, you're moving to avoid all that.
Okay, let's, let's stick with what we have in front of us. Mr. Don, is that the rule?
Yeah.
No, I've sent a point presenting tonight.
Well, I'd like to just remove it for a while. So we, we know we're good to go. If we, if I've got to make a change, I'd rather do it this week than, than next week.
Okay, so we need a motion for a motion. So the ones, we have a motion by Mr. Cruz, reported by Mr. Manabon, questions all in favor? How to oppose, motion period? Now we have a motion to approve the cost of, not that-
I make a motion to approve the costs of the project, additional costs of $846,000.
We have a motion by Mr. Manabon for 45, Mr. Cruz, so the total cost, all in favor? How to oppose, motion period?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're responsible for, between 11 and Winchester, we are responsible for, so I don't want to talk about it.
Uh, we actually have jurisdiction over that entire piece, but I've already initiated some conversations with Laker Village about cost sharing for that, you know, where we order with Laker Village. So, you know, that's what Beverly Hills has, that they would do for that, that north half of the 12 to 13 mile project, that they would pay for 50% of all of the construction for that.
Right, this is the prioritization portion of the agenda for us to consider. Uh, Mr. Lance was meeting tonight, he's celebrating 95 years. We consider naming the Veterans Garden to Big Land, Veterans Garden. Who's one of the architects behind that? He's getting up in age, I think it's something that-
He would be overwhelming.
Yeah, I, I think that's something to consider.
I don't agree.
Let's, let's just take a consensus, just, just to rename the Veterans Garden, he was the architect behind that.
Yes, that's what I wanted to say.
He's getting up in age, served, served the country, 95 years old, to rename it the, the council in the land, for city land, Veterans Garden. Would anybody else be opposed or in favor of that? Would you be opposed to it, Mr. Manabon?
I have a question, that's allowed. Would that take away from any other person who has either lived or served in Southfield as a veteran? And I ask that because I know that, you know, councilman- And I ask that because I know that, you know, Councilman Lance has put in a lot of years in the city. And he did work on the Veterans Garden and everything. But the question is, you know, is he the appropriate person? Or if we may rename it in his honor, would it take away from anyone else who may be deserving? I can't think of anyone offhand, but that's why I'm just asking that question.
He's just responsible for all of this whole front of the law, and all the gardens are from both ends. He's responsible for getting that done.
Correct.
So you know that.
Yes. That's why I'm just, I'm just posing that question.
I think I stretched it a little bit. I was, I was in council when that happened, and I think I stretched it a little bit.
Can we take a look at it? Let's get a consensus at least to take a look at it. Mr. Manabon?
Yes.
Two no's, two no's.
Yes.
And I would say yes as well. But we can take a look at it to see if he, if there's any conflict or anybody else that served longer.
But just, we're not, we're not renaming it, no, we're just looking, we're looking at it.
Okay, thank you. The first item, the first person to be quick, I think it's Mr. Gerard Mullin. Yeah, pretty much.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is post office, box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I have a question that I'd like to ask this council tonight. Why are councils' legal notices for public hearings ever? Never, not ever, never, ever posted by this city council on this city's legal notice bulletin board? And yet you folks on council have no problem posting your individual photos of yourselves just outside this room, in the hallway, across from the legal notice bulletin board? Why do you folks post your portraits of yourselves but not your notices, your legal notices? Paradoxically, it seems that everybody but this council posts their legal notices in Southfield, on Southfield's legal notice bulletin board. For example, both the state of Michigan and the federal government post their legal notices right outside this room. Even the U.S. District Court for the Middle District of Tennessee posts their legal notices in Southfield, on the city of Southfield's legal notice bulletin board. And Tennessee is over 400 miles away from Southfield. If another district court over 400 miles away can post their legal notices there just outside this room, why can't you folks? What is council's problem? Are you embarrassed by your bad spelling, your poor grammar, your inability to write a proper legal notice? Or are you simply trying to slip these notices past the voters, that is, the voters? Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
The next person to speak is Pamela Jarrow.
Pamela Jarrow, P O Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. I'm going to call you out, Pastor Jordan, for your behavior at that last televised meeting. You were classless, stupid, silly, and intellectually bankrupt. Mr. Frazier, you had a lot of common sense to just say you weren't taking sides, but the statement was inappropriate. My parents always told me that you don't make statements, you ask questions. So a better comment would have been, "Is she?" You insulted me, and you're so characteristic of what Republicans are. You insulted your opponent, who was your colleague for many, many years on this council. I think you owe me an apology. But you're not Christ-like enough, you're not spiritual enough, you're not religious enough, you're not ladylike enough, you're not anything like enough to apologize. The real problem is jealousy. You're so pissed off that you're an elected official, and when we walk into a room at the same event, that my presence in that room diminishes your significance to the point that I'm just as important, if not more important than you are. So I'm going to yield the rest of my time and give you something to ponder about. If you want to show the people real power, instead of banging your hands on the table here and trying to force your colleagues to accept the fact that you're council president, you would apologize. But I don't think you've got the, anything. I wish you were a guy so I could say the genitalia, but that's not appropriate. I don't think you even have the nerve or the courage to apologize. But guess what? I forgive you. I forgive you. I forgive you, Pastor Jordan.
The next person to speak is Arnie Oka. Counsel, are there any other items?
I had, Mr. Mayor, I had a few. The first one, I had a question on the neighborhood walks. We sent an email, it was Tuesday, about the neighborhood walks. That code enforcement was doing a, said walk with elected officials, and things like that. The question I have, maybe just because I'm still learning, when, when these press releases are done and it's communicated that elected officials will be there, are the elected officials, are they notified before the presses can go out? Or is it just an expectation that since code enforcement wants to do these, that elected officials will join?
The revised press release said city officials, and that's how it should have gone out. Originally, the elected officials were invited afterwards, but we sent these up to do, I think we got nine of them set up on Saturday mornings in different neighborhoods to go out and have a different level of interaction. We got our first one this past Saturday, had a modest... But it has also got my code, people out in these neighborhoods doing a very different level of canvassing. We're having some different conversations. So the, the first, the first press release should have been monitored more closely and should have just said city officials.
That's right.
But we did send it out to the other council members, and then it should have also been advancement to the clerk. That was an error.
Okay. Because the other question I have is, I know this really only affects me, but the Saturday mornings, unfortunately, I can't attend on Saturday mornings. And I know some Sunday mornings are more difficult for other people, they have church or other things to do. So I guess another question is, if we're going to look at this again, do it another year, or even revise it this year, if we could add maybe some Sunday mornings?
We can, in the two areas where we have any rules, have to do a Sunday morning as well.
Okay. The other issue that I wanted to bring up is what, and again, I'm still in my learning phase and trying to understand the history and how things have been done in the past with Southfield. But if a council person wanted to do something on their own, so for example, in the past, Mayor Lawrence had her roundtable, and she had her walks in the neighborhood. She did her, she did, and I understand that the mayor's office is a little bit separate from the council, and I've been told in the past that council has always acted as one body rather than individual council. So if a council person or Lloyd and I decide we want to do something, are there policies and procedures, or should there be created policies and procedures that would allow a council member on your own or council members to get together to do, I mean, then, to hold coffee hours? I know Councilman Frazier mentioned, you know, fixing up the room in the neighborhood center for, as a office to greet residents. For example, if I wanted to have set office hours and wanted the city to publicize that on their website or do a press release on that, is that something that I can do as an individual council member? Or is that something that has to be agreed upon and each council member has to participate or agree to beforehand? I don't want to overstep any, any boundaries. So I don't, I mean, feel free to...
I'll, I'll jump in just because I know I've talked to you on this subject. And, and it's really kind of a departure from where we've gone, certainly the mayor's office, because the mayor does act as an individual under the charter and has certain powers and authority under the charter that are uniquely individual. So the mayor did have the roundtable, or the mayor's walks, or whatever. I can't recall of a, of a situation where a council person, because the council is a collective body, that's how you act, where an individual council person can, can do something on their own. Now, clearly, if you wanted to have a coffee hour at Starbucks and you weren't involving city staff or city facilities, no problem, absolutely no problem. But if you want to use city facilities and city staff, I think, where I think we need to go is, we need to have a council policy established that council votes on and says, you know, yes, a council person, once a month or twice a, whatever, whatever the reasonable period is, has the right to use a city facility, because again, the, the owners of these city facilities are council collectively. And so that's who gives permission for somebody unless you've given it to, say, Parks and Rec or something. That's who would establish that someone has the right to come in and use a city facility. And also to use city staff, because those individuals work for the administrator as opposed to any individual council person. And so that was my thought, is that to kind of get through this kind of gray area where it's really not, it's really, that I'm aware of, it's never been done, and there really isn't a protocol established, have council put together something, and council votes on it and says, yes, these are the parameters where individual council people can act using a city facility and city staff. And then the administrator, there's no, there's no question in his mind when these things happen because there's a council approval of those. So in my mind, that's what needs to happen. There needs to be something established by council when individual council people can use city facilities, and obviously, you know, at no charge or anything, and then involve city staff. That way, there's just no issue then.
So I guess the follow-up question is, how, how is that established? Is that through, does the attorney draft that, do new city council members work together?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think that maybe even a council committee could kind of work with staff to come up with what some parameters are that you think are reasonable, and then it would be put back on the table, and then council as a whole would vote on that. Because again, if you took it to its logical extreme, and there are seven council people, and let's say we did it weekly, every week you could do something. That means every week, every night and day of every week, there would be a council person that would be using the city facilities and then also involving potentially city staff. So I think there is a, there's got to be some parameters, what's reasonable. I don't know yet what those are. We could take a look at some other cities, we could see how other cities do it. I think the idea of, you know, just having the, the office of that, that's a no-brainer. If it was, if it was established as a council office, then certainly you could come in and make appointments with residents, because council would be designating that as a, as a council office. So that could be a piece of this policy as well. So I, I think we, staff, administration just need to find out what's the consensus here. What would you like us to explore? What kinds of, you know, parameters would you like us to look into? And then we could come up with something, and then put it back on the table, and there could be a vote.
And I want to just, clerical support, things like postage. And then when a council member is a chairperson of a committee, one of the council committees, there are communications that are, are typed that said, that would be the other area. And then the council president, whoever the president is, does that body, is that body still part of the collective?
Right, is there a difference? Right, is there a difference for a council person?
What rights does the president have?
Right.
And I think that needs to be defined.
That's right.
Yeah, um, the problem with that, I, first of all, I'd like to know what other communities do.
Excuse me, if they're going to be outburst, you'll get thrown out of this meeting again. So you have to be quiet and respect the discussion at this stage.
I would like to know what other communities do, if they do anything at all. I can see meeting an individual, I mean, our office, the kitchen, that tells you.
Right.
But I mean, when, when people want to meet with an individual, if they want to meet with an individual council person, or there's an issue that we would like to talk to someone about, I think it'd be nice to have that room available. But in terms of, it could be, it could get to be, certain people would always be having, you know, some kind of meeting with people, I think it just wouldn't be necessary, I don't want to say fair, but evenly, not everyone wants to do it. And I think it almost gets to be political, I think it's very careful that way.
And I would mind learning a little bit more about history, because that one, there's a council, council secretary is part of the clerk's office, and since in my period here, because we've had such, we weren't replacing bodies, I think we need to learn about that. I am of the opinion that we need to get more clerical support for our council committees so that minutes a matter, if that could maybe be explored as well.
Mr. Manabon?
Well, just going on to what Joe said, it doesn't have to necessarily be every council member needs to do something. Or, you know, and in part of these rules that we created, there could be, you know, some language about what's considered excessive. But, and I understand your, your comment about, you know, things to be politically motivated. But then you could put in clauses about what happens during the election year. So from my understanding, there's been history that, I don't know if it's, it's probably just an unspoken or unwritten rule that during, during campaign season, there are certain things you can and cannot do. But for, but if I wanted to, the biggest example I have, and I asked, I did ask the city clerk about this shortly after I was appointed, I wanted to have, you know, set office hours once a month after, probably, you know, either close to the end of the day or after hours, because I don't think that residents should have to sit through hours of a council meeting to give a, you know, a water bill that they feel they've overpaid. Or even if I wanted to do a coffee hour to say, you know, these are things that are going on in the city, bring your ideas. And, you know, that's where it came up, there's no real set policy or procedure. And should there be one or not? And every council person doesn't have to participate, but at least have the option for individual council people to do similar things like that.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because it's been bothering me about this particular election season. There have been things that have gone on that I feel that we're on a slippery slope. When I first got in council, you couldn't even, it was a gentleman's rule. There was never, I don't think there was anything written, but it was a gentleman's rule. You didn't even collect signatures on your petitions on city property. And now that's, that's so far gone. And I, I think that we've, like I say, we're, we're on a slippery slope. And if you recall, at the last committee of the whole meeting, I said to you that I, I think that we need to put together a, a policy on conduct, on our council member conduct. And I said, and it has to include integrity, and the council president said, and ethics, and...
I started working on an ethics policy.
Yes.
Again, I... Again, I'm not sure what the parameters that the council feels are appropriate. I'm just going to bring a draft and...
Yes.
You can do...
That's why we got our 12 rules of...
Yeah, absolutely.
But the things that have been bothering me, and one is the justice thing. All you have to do is stand around and keep your mouth shut. And this place is so leaky that you hear all kinds of, all kinds of stories on how things get done. And I'm troubled by how that got started and how it ended up. I'm troubled by the neighborhood walks, how it got started and how it ended up. And I just think we're going in the wrong direction and we need to step back and be...I mean, we put our hands up in the air and said that we're going to live by the rules. And I think we're breaking the rules and I think that's terrible. There's no one council person that ought to be going to the...no council person ought to be going to the staff and telling them, do this and do that, for sure. And then to have something like that happen and then get it cleaned up so that it doesn't look like that happened. I have a real problem. It's just giving us a black eye. And I think the faster we can put this document together and get it voted on, the better we're all going to...
Obviously, that's fine. I'll get it the next P O W, we'll have a draft for you. I don't know if you want to put a committee first, but that's still going to be different than what Mr. Nandawan is talking about. The policy for using city facilities in...
Well, we already have this policy that during campaign season, you can't have a program on cable.
Yeah, I think it was 90 days before the election or...
I think it was the final day.
Oh, filing, I could check that.
Yeah, we already did that one.
Right, right.
We stopped that slippery slope. But there's other ones going on and it just really bothers me. The second thing is, I've seen so many yard signs setting on the right-of-way that I don't know if our sign person is not following through on it or not. But everybody that's running for office should have gotten a letter, because I always get them, about where the signs are appropriate and where they're not appropriate. And that if they're not where they're supposed to be, that they'll be confiscated. And I see signs all over the place that are practically in a roadway. And somebody needs to call all the people together that are running for office and tell them to read the letter. So, I hope they, I hope everybody got the letter.
No, I told them that. I have no way to do this.
So, those are my two gripes for the night. But I think one is pretty serious.
So, what, in terms of the policy for using city facilities, I get the ethics thing.
Would it be almost a combined policy with different parts?
It's too bad that we have to put it in writing.
Can I make a suggestion? Senator Gregory, Vance Gregory, used to hold coffee hours at Coffee House, you know, like Starbucks or what's the... that was commonplace for him to invite, he'd send out a flyer and people would buy their own coffee, but he'd have a table reserved or a section of the restaurant that usually was in the morning. And there's no reason you couldn't do something like that.
So, if I did that, is that something that I can ask Mr. Zorn to publicize on the website?
Then I don't think so.
And that's where we want to clarify.
Right, right.
This is going to make the flyer.
But he would, well, he would send out a flyer from his office and of course, he had money to do it. We'd have to, you probably have to do it yourself because then everybody's going to do it. But I mean, that way, you're not on city, I don't mean to interrupt, but no, you're not on the city property. So, you could do it anywhere. I know what you're saying about having an officer, but I think that you invite people in and have a coffee hour. I have problems with that.
I'm going to say one thing. There has been two instances where council presidents have held events and have done them in the city using city staff. It's not the first time with just one that a council president has held events. So, I would defend what I did any day because if an other council person, I've done this council since 1997, that has held events using city staff, and there's nothing said to it, the minute that I did it, it was a big issue.
If your friend jumped off a bridge, would you jump out and do it?
But that makes a difference, that's totally true.
I mean, two wrongs don't make a right.
No, two wrongs don't make a right.
And if we're talking about ethics and we're talking about integrity, we talk about, doesn't matter what other people did.
I brought it up years ago that we needed to establish a policy on ethics for this council and the mayor.
And I'm pushing it, I'm staying on it. I'm not going to get, I'm not going to give up on it.
Do you remember?
Oh, I mean, that's why we're going to ask, because I don't...
Years ago, I said we need to establish ethics and integrity for the council and the mayor. And nobody around this table at that time, you were on the council, Jones was on the council.
I don't really care if anybody else supports it or not, I'm going to keep on saying it.
And now that I, when I did an event, it's a big issue. I'll stand by it and the community needed it, it was not a point for that. And I will stand by that event.
The issue is, one council person should not be bossing staff around.
Not a count. I don't know who, are you talking about me?
Yes, I'm talking about you.
That's not true. I did. Heard wrong.
No, I did not hear, I heard from the people that were involved in it. I heard from, I heard from the people that were involved in it. And I don't want to go any further than that, but...
Well, we'll have to talk afterwards because I like to hear.
I'm not, I'm not going to mention any names because the staff people, I told them that I would not get them personally involved. But we ought to be big enough not to do it in the first place.
It's been a dead place. I'll stand by that event.
Doesn't matter. If you wanted to do it at the event for the city, bring it out at the council meeting and let's talk about it. Don't do it Tuesday morning or Wednesday afternoon.
No, I was planning that event, it was, I was approached by someone.
It doesn't matter. If you should do it at the council meeting, so we all know what's going on.
Okay.
You totally disagree?
Yes.
Oh, so I guess we're going to keep on doing it behind the scenes.
Personally, you're going to draft something else?
Well, I clearly am working on the ethics. I'm not sure if I'm getting direction yet on the individual council persons' protocol for using city facilities. Do we have a consensus that we want to do that?
I would say yes, if you're just buying, if you can't make concessions. What privileges an individual legislator have? Those privileges need to be defined. Is there a cutoff period, so many days prior to an election, where you no longer have access? And then I do, you know, within the council structure, we've got, you speak, council president speaks as the spokesperson for the council. Is that person's position different? And I guess the same would apply to the pro temp. Is their position different as the representative of that body? Because when you read our charter, the mayor is the chief ambassador, the mayor is absent. It's the council president pro temp. So, is that person got a different role in these privileges? And I think that needs to be amplified, stated clearly too.
There's a, yeah, I believe the council president has a slightly different role than a council member because they run the meeting, they, you know, they act in behalf of the mayor when the mayor's not there. But they're not independent of the council and can make decisions without involving, without involving the council that the council should be involved in.
But the council president also switches terms every year, potentially, depending on voting, council's voting. So, I mean, that could also make a difference in whether or not the council president is considered a little bit more independent than the council or not. I think you're going to get into a gray area because if the council president, for example, has an event scheduled in October, or even let's say November, but then all of a sudden something switches and they're no longer council president, can they still have that event? Can they not? So, it's going to be a gray area that may need further discussion, but, you know, I think it is something that should be defined.
To clarify my position, I don't care if the council president has an event, just bring it to the council, talk about it so that we all understand what's going on and we give a consensus or at least we're involved in it. Not the kind of stuff that's going on now.
The kind of stuff that's going on now?
Yes.
Finally, you're saying words like, things are going behind us, that's not true.
Yes, it is. It is.
Perception is reality.
Either that or the people that are involved in it are liars.
They might be.
Oh.
But they need to confront me in this issue.
Well, they won't confront you because, because of your status as a council person, they're afraid that it'll be detrimental to their income. There are a lot of folks that work for the city of Southfield that, that give us more, a lot more credit than we're, than we're due.
I mean, I don't mind working, you know, working with, giving her some of my input if that would help. But I don't want to be the one, the lone voice.
I mean, I think maybe between, you know, Fred and I, maybe you...
I like addressing the ethics thing. It's one of the things pulling up our redevelopment ready.
Yeah, well, we're going to, and then build this in as a component of it and we'll see what happens. I think we'll put it in there as standard of conduct, we'll include also those kinds of things. I think that's the best we can do. And then you'd be free to adopt the policy, excise that piece, keep this, whatever you think.
Is this kind of, is this about meeting with more than one person?
Yes.
Because a lot of them keep coming here and be a council person or make an appointment and sit there in the lobby and talk to the council person about whatever they have concerned. I mean, that's no different to meeting with a mayor.
Correct. But one thing that I wanted to do as a council person is really be available to the residents. Yes, they can email me, they can call me. But I think if there was, if I wanted to do, you know, every few months, say, okay, I'm going to have, have a coffee hour, let me tell you what the city has been doing. Not everybody watches the meetings or reads the minutes. You know, just to, you know, this is what the city's doing, give me your ideas.
Why couldn't you do that at a restaurant like, you know, like Vance Gregory did? Why couldn't you? That's what he would do. He would have coffee hour in the morning, or whenever you have it. But I mean, people...
So, I don't, I don't have a problem doing that, but then I would ask that, is the city allowed to publicize that on the website?
On the website.
Because I can send out a flyer, but who am I going to send the flyers out to the people that I know?
Right.
But the people that I don't know that may want an opportunity to come and voice their ideas or their concerns, may want, you know, I may not know who they are. The same idea with having, having office hours. If I, if I say every, the first Thursday of every month, for example, I want to have set office hours between four and five, obviously, I would, I don't know if I would need any additional city staff because I think I can handle a meeting on my own. But I would, I would want to use space in the city and I would ask for that to be publicized so people know that, you know, if they want to make an appointment, they can, or if they just want to drop in. And again, a lot of it goes back to having residents wait three, four hours during a council meeting to say, here's an issue that I'm having, I was told to bring it to council. And I think that if residents had a set time where they know they can meet with, with a council person, then maybe they would be more, they would be receptive to that and wouldn't spend the hours at a council meeting when they just have a couple minutes.
Well, I'm just speaking for myself, and I'm sure it's true about the council people. I get emails and phone calls from people that have issues and if they think it's something that I could, you know, help them with, I don't, rarely do I meet with them. I normally don't have to. But it's either a letter or, you know, a note or a phone call discussing something they're concerned about, and I always follow up on it. But I mean, it's never been something that it would be several people. I think that's where it becomes kind of a...
And I don't know if it will. It's just, it's something that I thought of. And then when I asked, I asked Nancy about it and she asked, she wanted me to talk to Sue to find out what, because as council has historically acted as, acted as one body, and that's where, that's how it really came about to bring up this conversation. The same thing, I had a conversation with the mayor last week asking about, you know, doing a proclamation or a joint resolution. And I said, you know, if it's something that I'm bringing because I feel that this person, this company, this organization is worth it to have a proclamation or a joint resolution, is it something that I can present or not? And he said, no, it's always the mayor and the council president that present those. The person receiving it knows who initiated it, but, you know, based on protocol and how things are done, it's always done by the head officials in the city, which, which is fine with me. But, you know, that's why I'm trying to figure out what, what can and cannot be done using city resources is really what it comes down to.
So, that discussion won't have to happen, but I'm going to go back to the council president pro temp. I think we need to look at maybe even putting a job description on council president pro temp. Because previous council presidents have overstepped their boundaries by attending staff meetings, by meeting with developers without council knowing. So, there's been other things that have been done by council presidents that people have done in their seat that council people would find out later. So, again, people are considering me. There's been many things done in this position of council president. So, maybe if at this time, we establish rules for council presidents in the pro temp. Because there's been many things done by previous council presidents that were not right, but you kind of will favor the council president. So, that should be...
Just to make sure that you, you know, because the charter steps forth what the duties are. I mean, if you want to just talk about, like, again, a standard of conduct, I guess, what council is authorizing a president or a pro temp, I guess maybe we could, but obviously, you can't alter the charter by a vote of council either.
One, I think, alter the charter, but clarify, clarify what the council president can do.
Well, I can recall in recent years, a council president being in a rollover. Definitely something.
We ought to have Mike McGee come. Mike McGee did a presentation on this very subject at the Michigan Municipal League.
Oh.
At a conference.
Okay.
And he, because he was council person, and so he did that, oh, it's been several years ago. Maybe he's in too lofty a position. We couldn't afford him now.
Yeah, exactly.
Let me ask, because we just came up, there's not been any in this world that a person can't do double the work.
can't sit down with another person.
If you want to.
I mean, I don't care what you are, I don't care if you're king, king of the world, you can sit down with anybody you want, as long as you're, as long as you're not having a conflict, and you're doing something, taking a bribe or something, I sit down with anybody.
Maybe we're weird.
I still gotta come to the table and vote.
Before something's coming to council, and it's a hot item, I've never known a council president to meet with the buyers, the sellers of a property, before it's sold, and shaping things on how it's gonna be done.
Sit down with Northland.
No, it's...
Sit down with Northland.
I'll tell ya, I'll tell ya.
I'll sit down with anybody, any place, I don't care. I don't care if it's, it's five minutes before the meeting, or if you choose, I'll sit down with anybody.
I'll tell you this is a different guy.
Nobody will stop me from talking.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
I know what you're having with me.
Yeah. Will anyone?
I'm not gonna start anything else.
You started.
Thank you very much. All right.